I want to call the March 18th meeting of the Fergie Municipal Planning Commission to order. Again, we'll be operating under the, um, this meeting in compliance with Governor Lee's executive order for the continuous state of emergency to facilitate the response to the COVID-19. I will read the item on the agenda that we'll be discussing. Mark will go over the staff's recommendation and, um, then he will, um, we will have a motion to, um, and a second, and then we will be called for the start of discussion. Any citizen's comments will be read into the record. The applicant will be asked if they have any comments or questions, and then, um, planning commission members will be able to ask questions about Mark and the applicant at that point. Mark will then, um, call our members. He'll go down a list, um, as proceeding normally, I think, and we'll call to ask if anybody has any questions or comments, and then we'll get those questions or comments answered either by Mark or the applicant, and then we'll call for a vote. We'll probably have to amend some of the motions, but we'll get started with that. Approval of the agenda, Mark?
Well, before we get started, let me, let me do a roll call of the planning commissioners, because I just want to make sure we have at least five that are present. This is spring break week, and Chairman Holliday.
Here.
Commissioner Russ.
Commissioner Russ is present.
Commissioner Green.
Commissioner Green is present.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Commissioner St. Clair is present.
Mayor Williams.
Mayor Williams, present.
And I know that Commissioner Dick and Vice Mayor Povlin are out, so at this point, we do have five, so we do have enough for a quorum. Um, and I'm showing at this time that Commissioner Dick, Vice Mayor Povlin, Commissioner Bellamy, and Commissioner Myers are currently absent, so, but again, we do have five, so we can proceed.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Mark, I think you have something.
Yeah, staff is recommending to remove agenda item number five. We're still waiting to receive some guidance from the applicant as to how they want to proceed with that re-subdivision plat.
Uh, Mayor Williams, make a motion to approve the amended agenda, please.
Commissioner Russ.
Okay, I'll read the roll. Chairman Holliday.
Approve.
Commissioner Russ.
Approve.
Commissioner Green.
Commissioner Green, approve.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Commissioner St. Clair, approve.
Mayor Williams.
Mayor Williams, approve.
Um, Commissioner Bellamy. And Commissioner Myers. Okay. Um, I do note that the youth representative, Austin Struggle, is also here. I see him on the screen as well, uh, for the record.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the motion passes to amend the agenda five zero.
Item number, item number two, approval of the minutes of the February 18th, 2021 meeting. Do we have any changes or comments?
I do not have any recommended changes.
Mayor Williams makes a motion to approve the minutes for February 18th, 2021.
Second, do we have a second?
Commissioner St. Clair.
Okay, I may just go with St. Clair on that one.
That's fine.
Kind of a tie. Okay. Okay, um, Chairman Holliday.
Discussion and a, um, public hearing on a request to.
We got to vote on the minutes.
Okay.
Minutes, sorry. Um, the motion is to approve the minutes as submitted. Chairman Holliday.
Approve.
Commissioner Russ.
Commissioner Russ approves.
Commissioner Green.
Commissioner Green, approve.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Commissioner St. Clair, approve.
Mayor Williams.
Mayor Williams, approve.
And the motion passes five zero.
Okay, now, item number three, discussion and public hearing on a request to install plus or minus 115 linear feet of four-inch medium-density MDP-E gas main and 600 linear feet of two-inch MP, MDP-F, or E, I'm sorry, gas main along a portion of Everett Road, a portion of Long Ridge Road in the Saddle Ridge subdivision, and a portion of Broe Hackett Boulevard and Comblane Road in Fox Run subdivision, KUB applicant.
Yeah, this is a, uh, gas upgrade project to help improve, um, the, uh, system resiliency and redundancy in this part of the town. Um, and, um, basically, the areas shown in red on the map are the affected sections of, uh, of, uh, this part of the town. It's not a huge area. Um, the first area, the only street that is really affected is Long Ridge, part of Long Ridge Road and Saddle Ridge. Um, and then there's also a, um, a gas line easement that's proposed between, really adjacent to the walking trail that connects Rochard Boulevard and Fox Run with Long Ridge Road and Saddle Ridge. And then the third area is an extension from Everett Road to Comblane, and that particular gas line easement will be crossing a creek, um, so, um, they would need to coordinate that with the town's engineering staff. Um, of course, as with any of these projects, care would need to be taken with, uh, crossing, um, streets and walking trails, sidewalks, creeks in this case. Uh, they are proposing the directional bore, um, most if not all the project to a depth of at least three feet, uh, so there should be minimal impact. Um, the, uh, remaining comments, um, that were sent to the applicant, uh, are at your places there. Um, there are five remaining staff recommendations on this item. We do recommend to approve the request, um, and these are pretty standard subject twos, frankly. Uh, the first is to, for the applicant, to obtain a grading and right-of-way permit from the town. Um, this would involve the installation of silt and possibly tree fencing, um, and whatever approvals they may need dealing with the creek crossing as well. Um, that where the trail, sidewalk, and roadway crossings occur, that they do perform directional boring. Any damage that might result would have to be repaired by the contractor, and the areas need to be restored to their pre, um, construction condition. Um, notifying the residents of the affected areas, um, however they want to go about doing that, but just letting them know ahead of time before the work proceeds, um, conducting traffic control as needed. Uh, and then there's a couple of, as I mentioned in the introduction there, a couple of new gas line easements, and those would need to be, uh, picked up on the assbill and, uh, actually platted and recorded, uh, so that their location is known and people know not to put structures within, uh, that physical space. So with those subject twos, again, the staff does recommend approval of this item.
Uh, Mayor Williams makes a motion to approve with all listed subject twos.
Commissioner Green seconds a motion.
Not sure if the applicant, I think Robert was, I think I saw his name, if he, if you have any questions.
I'm, I'm comfortable with all those, those points you have on there, the subject twos. Um, yeah, like you said, this is all pretty, pretty straightforward, nothing too tricky about this one.
Okay.
Mark, you're going to do a roll call, please?
Yeah, is there any other discussion that anyone has in the planning commission? Okay, if not, the, uh, motion and second is to approve subject to the five remaining comments. Uh, Chairman Holliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Russ.
Commissioner Russ.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Commissioner Green, approve.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Mr. St. Clair agrees.
Uh, Mayor Williams.
Mayor Williams agrees.
Okay. I'm not sure if Commissioner Bellamy or Commissioner Myers are present.
Commissioner, Commissioner Myers, aye.
Oh, you're here? Okay, all right. I got you. All right, so let the record show that the, uh, motion passes by a vote of six zero.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Hey, Mark, do you need me to stick around for anything further for that?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I, I think it's good.
All right, thank you very much, everybody.
Item number four, discussion and public hearing on a re-subdivision plat for lot one of Edward Johnson subdivision, 354 Boring Road, 2.61 acres, two lots on R-2, R-2, grown land surveying applicant.
Uh, this minor re-subdivision plat is, involves a little over 2.6 acres on Boring Road on the north side of Boring Road. Um, the, uh, there's an existing house there, and they're basically wanting to create a new lot to the east of the existing house, um, so that a family member can build, uh, a house there, um, next to, uh, another family member. Uh, and, um, so really, this is only being presented to you because applicants requested a variance from the requirement in the subdivision regulations to construct a pedestrian facility along the frontage of a collector's street as part of the subdivision process. Uh, Boring Road is a collector's street. Um, and, um, as you may remember, last month, we actually had a larger property just to the east of this, the Mary Smith property, uh, where a variance was granted for the large 15-acre portion, but the two smaller house lots were required to construct a pedestrian facility, uh, when they build the houses on those lots. So, um, unlike that property, uh, the east part of the Mary Smith property actually adjoins a, an asphalt walking trail that was built as part of Country Way subdivision several years ago, uh, so they have something there to connect to this particular piece of property. Uh, if a pedestrian facility was constructed across the frontage, it wouldn't go any, anywhere in either direction. There is a sidewalk on the other side of Boring Road that was actually built as part of Baldwin Park, goes all the way down to Smith, Smith Road. Um, I went out and visited, uh, the family, um, on site and kind of looked at the, um, condition out there, um, and trying to propose something that, um, is consistent with what we have done in other house lots, uh, but also recognize the unique condition of this property where pedestrian facilities do not abut the property. Um, what the staff is recommending in regards to that variance request, which would need to be acted on separately prior to plat, um, is that the pedestrian facility not be required to be constructed at this time, um, but similar to what we've done on some other projects in the past, and I've talked with Tom Hill this week about this, um, is to require a, um, pedestrian facility covenant that would basically, at some future date, acquire the property owners there to, um, to work with the town to, uh, construct a pedestrian facility along that frontage, likely when other properties around them, uh, are further subdivided or developed. Um, and that way, it would connect to something, but, uh, you'd still not just waive completely the requirement for constructing the facility, but it would be, uh, installed, uh, you know, at a more appropriate time. Um, the, um, this plat also would need to reflect, um, pedestrian, a pedestrian easement along the frontage, just to make sure that, um, you know, there's, that that's designated, that there's physical space, uh, devoted to, in some future date, it may be many years from now, uh, but a pedestrian facility with a compliant grass strip along, uh, that part of Boring Road. Um, the, um, it's, it's probably likely on that side of Boring Road, it'll be, um, asphalt walking trail, because that's what's been started down at Country Way and probably what we would, we would look at trying to work with the, uh, two house lots that were part of the Smith subdivision to have them, uh, connect to that with a, with a walking trail. Um, so that's basically the staff's recommendation with regards to the variance request. Uh, it would be delayed, uh, until an appropriate time, and there would need to be an instrument that would be recorded, uh, that's approved by the town attorney that would trigger the construction of that facility at, at the appropriate time. So if anybody has any questions about that particular, uh, recommendation, I'll be happy to try to, to, uh, answer that. Let me show you, this is also, this is kind of a picture I took, uh, I was out there on the property. Um, it's a really beautiful part of, part of the town. Um, and this is the section of Boring Road that, uh, was actually reconstructed as part of Baldwin Park, so they actually put Curbing Gutter, uh, on both sides of the road, uh, on this section, and a sidewalk on the, um, south side, so. Uh, but their property there is on the right, um, and you can see the property corner, it's where that, that painted post is, and so the pedestrian facility would, would, um, you know, probably be behind those trees, uh, or between those trees and, and the road somewhere in there, because there is a six-foot grass strip required on a, on a collector's street. So if anybody has any questions, uh, on that before, um, we open it up for discussion, I'd be happy to try to.
Okay, Mark, we need to start with the variance. Do we need a motion on the variance before we discuss that?
Yes, you would.
Do I have?
Mayor Williams, uh, make a motion based on what Mark has read as far as the reasoning of the, uh, of a future, uh, walking trail.
Commissioner Myers, second.
I don't have any citizen comments on this, but I know the applicant is present, and, uh, if the chairman wishes to, uh, open that up, then I'm sure they would like to talk about their request, um, with the planning commission.
Okay, we're, we're just talking about the variance here, correct?
Yes, the variance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, the applicant, will you tell us who you are and give us an address, please?
Yeah, this is, uh, Amon Cottrell and my dad, Steve, and my mom, Martha. Uh, Steve and Martha are the ones that live there in the existing house, and my wife and I are the ones, uh, uh, doing the subdivision here, 354 Boring Road.
Thank you. Uh, do you have any comments to make on the variance?
Uh, yeah, and Mom, Mom's got a few, too. Um, sort of the summation of it, and Mark, I appreciate your time, uh, spent with us already, kind of checking out the, the unique situation here. Um, the, we would, we would like to ask for consideration on, uh, two things that are a little bit outside of the scope of the staff recommendation, uh, though we understand them, uh, for sure. Uh, A, we, we still, we still think, uh, given the nature of the property, and it's just me trying to build next door to my dad, that, uh, we, we really would hate to put anything in the front yard, which is basically what that 20-foot easement, um, would be. It's, it's pretty, it encroaches on the front yard that, uh, is existing right now, uh, that they, they did not want anything in there, and, and of course, we'd rather not have it, uh, in ours if, if we can find a way around that. Um, the, in reviewing the, um, the staff recommendations also, we're not, not super comfortable with, um, uh, you know, signing a thing that'll, that where we're responsible for building it, since, uh, you know, we, we don't really want to build it, uh, but we do understand, like, the easement, and would, we'd like to pursue the, the possibility of, uh, letting the town of Fergie have the necessary easement, so that if and when the time came to connect a walking trail, uh, town of Fergie would have the, the choice to do that, but it, it's, it's sort of one of those expenses that's going to be a pretty big, pretty big consideration for somebody like us, uh, to have to think about doing it at an undisclosed time. Um, and, and, you know, we, we've been there, it's, it's family land, granddaddy was there until he was about 101 years old, walking up and down that road with me, and, um, you know, would, would love to make this work out. It's, it's the reason my wife and I moved back, uh, to Knoxville about four years ago to, to eventually live there and, and raise our kids next door to, to their granddaddy. Um, so, uh, hope, hope you'll consider that, and, and I'll let Mom, if, if time permits, uh, say, say her piece is here, too. She, she grew up in that house, so she's been there longer than all of us combined, I think.
That's fine, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, well, the original house was built in 1956, and it was given by Spencer Smith to his daughter, Frances Smith Johnson, my mother, Edward Johnson, and Frances Johnson, who lived there and all of their married life, and that was my home, uh, growing up there, and, um, our family, and, until I married my husband Steve in 1976, and we came back to that home, built an addition in 1995, and brought our growing family of sons there and lived with my dad, Edward Johnson, and we lived there, I mean, and continue to live there today, uh, in.
Two years.
Two years ago, he, he passed away at the age of 101. Um, in 2019, we completed another addition on the house. Our son and his family, Lee and Laura Cottrell, um, now live there with us as well, and, um, three generations, uh, two separate times, three generation families, um, and our hope is that Amon and his family, Amon and Angela and their children could build, um, there's plenty of space on that property. However, um, w- we do, um, not want a, a trail or sidewalk on our property. We understand that the town does have rights to take property, but, um, it's unclear to us about the payment of all of this, and we are not planning on funding any, um, construction for, uh, walking trails, sidewalk on our property. Um, if, if the town insists on that, then we're just going to have to withdraw our request, um, to build. Um, also, to the west of our driveway, uh, the property goes up, and there are, um, six, eight dogwood and burning bushes planted 15 years ago, um, which would, um, be wiped out. Our barrier on that side of the, the yard would just be gone, and the walking trail would kind of go up, and, you know, it just is very, it seemed like a very odd place to have a trail or sidewalk at all on that side of the driveway. Um, so, i- anyway, our, you know, our hope was to continue to share our property with the three generations, to include our other son and his family there, and we would certainly request that you would give us a complete variance to not have to build sidewalk there at all, um, especially since there is a sidewalk just on the other side of the road. Happy to answer any other questions about the property or our family intent.
Okay, thank you. Mark, do you want to explain the, uh, financial end of this, please?
Well, I mean, I don't really, I'm certainly sympathetic, and I've had a very nice meeting with them out on the property, and, uh, I certainly understand where they're coming from. Um, I just am trying to, I have to look at this stuff from, uh, being consistent, you know, with other properties with similar situations. Um, it, uh, you know, to put a facility across that entire frontage is, uh, you know, it may be around, it could be as, you know, maybe up to $20,000, so, I mean, it's not an insignificant amount. Um, and it's kind of a ballpark of current costs, um, but, uh, it's, you know, it's something that, um, it's in our subdivision regulations. Uh, Boring Road, uh, you know, I remember when I first drove on it, uh, back when I first started with the town many years ago, reminded me of some of the country roads I grew up on, and I just loved it. Um, but it's kind of like a lot of the, this area, it's growing, and it's going to change, um, and it's going to have a lot more traffic in the future. Um, and it's going to be important to have a pedestrian facility on both sides of the road, uh, especially since one's already been started further east at Country Way. Um, so again, it's just from a staff perspective, um, we just have to be consistent. Now, you know, if you had 900 feet of frontage, like the, the larger Smith track to the, to the east of this, immediate east, it made sense to grant a variance there because it was a 15-acre track with over 900 feet of frontage. Um, but the other two house lots will be required to build a pedestrian facility as part of the building permit process, so, um, this is a little different because it doesn't have, uh, any existing facility that would step to the property, um, and that's why we were, been trying to figure out a way to meet the town's requirement, but also acknowledge the uniqueness of this situation, uh, would be to delay the construction until it makes sense and it's appropriate, and have the mechanisms in place that would allow that to occur. So, um, that's really the staff's position on it. Uh, we certainly understand where the applicant's coming from, of course, I mean, uh, uh, but we, we do have to try to be consistent and, and evaluate each, each situation on a case-by-case basis.
I, I understand what you're saying, sir. I, what I, I didn't hear you say anything regarding the finances, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's either reasonable or appropriate to penalize homeowners who've been there for 60-plus years. Where, where do we come up with $20,000 to put a sidewalk on our property? If the town must do that at some point in the future, at which point we don't even know if it would cost 20,000 or 30,000 or more thousand, um, then the town needs to, to do that, but not the homeowners. That, that's our, that's our thing we're saying, as well as really asking to, for the, you know, the variance to be granted as a special case, we're also saying, we cannot pay that. How, how could you expect us to pay that? That seems extremely unreasonable. So can, so will the town pay for that at some point in the future if we say, right, we understand if you have to make a, a sidewalk there, um, and you have to take your easement, but it's up to Fergie to do that, not, not the Cottrell family? Otherwise, are, are you saying that we, um, today, if we were to withdraw our whole proposal to you, you would just say, well, never mind? And then someday in the future, you might come to the Cottrell family, whoever lives there, and say, we're going to be taking this easement and building a facility, and which. and building a facility, in which case we would say, well, we don't like it, but I guess we have to let you take what property belongs to you as a town, but you would be doing it, not, not us. The construction and the, the cost would be borne by the town.
Yeah, and I understand that. It's, um, it, I know the townhouse lots on Smith that the, whoever's building the houses will be building those sections of pedestrian facility. And it won't be the town doing that. So again, we're just trying to be, to be consistent. Now, this, on this subdivision here, you know, you've got, um, really only one lot that's being created here. You can see it there, but the, the parent track to the west of that, you know, is really being altered. Um, but again, it's just being consistent with, with regards to that, to that requirement and the action that was taken, uh, just last month, um, on a similar situation in some cases.
Uh, Mark, can I add one thing? This is Steve Cottrell, the, the homeowner also.
Yes.
So I, one difference that we do feel is important is that we are, we're not subdividing it to sale to make a profit. We are going to give it to Ayman and Angela, our son and daughter-in-law. We're, we're not, um, I, I don't know how the town Faragut sees that, but it's not, we're, we're gaining, uh, property value. Uh, we're, we're, we're passing along as the property originally was given to us by Ed Johnson, uh, years ago. So I, that, you know, it's our consideration also.
Mayor Williams, I've got a question. Mark, can this be subdivided again to the opposite direction?
Um, it possibly could be, um. Yeah, I mean, it, it'd be tight. They may have to, the carport may have to be moved to meet setback requirements for the new lot line, but it's possible. That'd be the most though you could ever do is one other lot on that lot, 1R1. Um, it could be further divided beyond that.
Okay. Uh, well, our plans are, are for a sidewalk to be on that side of the road. I mean, it's where the groundwork has been laid for it to happen. And, uh, so I think, uh, that that's something that we're going, going to do. Uh, and as more lots are subdivided then that will kick in the, uh, the consistency that you're asking for there, uh, for us to do in our subdivision regulations. So what we've got to figure out here is, uh, you know, the consistency that we want based on the whole stretch of property, I believe. I think that's what we need to discuss before we ever even get any further along in this variance. Which would, uh, you know, actually dictate whether the, uh, uh, according to them, uh, whether they would even go forward with a, uh, re-subdivision to begin with.
Well, this, the lot 1R1 is, uh, bigger than the two house lots that were further east there. Um, and it possibly could be re-divided in the future, which may trigger a requirement for a facility along that lot. That might be one thing to, to look at. Um, and then basically the covenant, cover lot 1R2, which would be a lot less distance, a lot less cost, um, because that one's 127 feet versus 262. Um, and then just making sure that the plat captures the easement that would be needed to build a walking trail and have the grass strip should that ever happen in the future.
Well, at the rate that area is growing, I think, uh, that there will be a future there because that's, that whole stretch of road, uh, on the north side is, is, like you said earlier, it's very developable. And evidently the people that live on that route all have a very long lifespan.
Hopefully all of us.
Yeah.
Uh, that might be something that you want to look at if you want to live a long time. The air up there must be good or, or the ground's good and there's no radon or anything else. So, but anyway, that's, that's something that, uh, the question I had to start with, uh, as far as the variance.
Mark, the question I have is, uh, if we, if we do something inconsistent with our plan here, um, are we throwing ourselves into the having that consideration in other places too? And then we end up with patchy sidewalks?
Um, well, I'm not, let me go back here. I'm trying to look at this channel logically. The set, the lot 1R2 is probably a little smaller than the two house lots that were part of the Smith re-division last month. I don't know. I mean, since lot 1R1 could possibly be re-subdivided. I mean, you could look at potentially, of course, getting an easement across the whole frontage that you need for the future. But then maybe just have the, uh, the covenant address the, the new house lot similar to the two new house lots that were platted with the Smith. And it wouldn't really relate to lot 1R1. I mean, that, you're still being consistent in that regard. You got a new lot and they're going to have to, at some point when it makes sense, um, put a pedestrian facility across their frontage. Uh, but the lot really is not being altered. I mean, it is being altered by creating this new lot, but the rest of it's not. Wouldn't really potentially be subject to that covenant. That's the only kind of, uh, the middle ground that I can think of that would, to me, I think you could say is consistent in some regards to the, to house lots at Smith, Smith property. Uh, but certainly making sure that with this plat on the whole frontage that you get the easement that you would need for whoever would build the remaining part in the future. So you wouldn't have to worry about that. And plus you would know that someday in the future, maybe a long time from now, who knows? There, there will be a, a pedestrian facility along that frontage.
What is the means of getting the easement? What, when, when you say that, I'm just, I just like to have that.
It would be shown on this plat. It would be drawn in and labeled. Um, so you just want to make sure that you've got enough physical space. I think there's about seven feet from the property corner to the back of curb out there. Right? And that's not really enough physical space to get the facility and the grass strip in the right of way. So it would have to be in the easement outside of the right of way. And that's pretty common. Plats have the easements. There's a water line easement actually on this property that, um, is 20 feet wide across the frontage. Uh, that until we saw this plat, I didn't even know what existed. First utility district had, uh, obtained that some time ago.
So that you're telling me then that that easement is, is basically already there?
Well, no, there's a water line easement.
Uh, yes. I mean, yeah, that's.
But there's not, there's not a pedestrian facility easement outside of the right of way currently, no. And that would need to be addressed on this plat.
Is that something that the town pays for, pays the homeowner for the easement?
It's part of the, it's part of the subdivision plating process to establish easements, whether it's pedestrian facility or utility drainage. Um, you know, it's very common on, on any, really any of these plats for these easements to be, uh, added or.
I understand that, but you, you can draw an easement, but then does whatever you draw just become yours? Is it already yours?
No, it's actually, it remains, uh, private property, but there's within that physical space, um, there's, uh, whoever has rights to whatever is in the easement could, you know, work with the property owner and, and do whatever's provided for in that physical space, even though it would not be public property because it'd be outside of the public right of way. I'll just tell you that every lot that's subdivided in the town and most communities really not just the town, you've got the right of way, which is public property. And then along the frontage, you've got another 10-foot and it's normally a standard drainage utility easement. Um, so probably in this case, you'd be looking at a, from the right of way, um, I would say go back 20 feet. I, I don't know. I'd have to get with the town engineer on this, but, and you know, designate that space as, you know, a pedestrian easement area so that, you know, if, you know, when you put the facility in, when the facility goes in, that it's, that there's a right to do that. Um, it's been worked out with the, through the plating process.
So Mark, on any, anybody's, um, lot that they have their home on or a lot that's going to be built on, there is a strip of land that the utilities, uh, both, um, water, sewer, uh, cable, if that's, um, and, and the, um, gas lines are there with everybody's piece of property. Is that correct?
Yeah. On the, the standard util, standard easements are typically 10 feet along the front, five feet along the side property lines and five or 10 feet along the back, depending on whether the property abuts lots that are interior to a subdivision or, um, lots that are not part of the same subdivision. Um, so that's the normal easements. Now sometimes you have larger easements than that, like for example, on this one, a 20-foot water line easement along the frontage of Boring Road. That's an easement that's not standard. The first utility district, I guess, has obtained that easement. Um, and, uh, and it's reflected on this, this plat. Um, the plat is basically just draws in these easements so that when people buy property, they know where these, these spaces that are, that have certain rights are located. And there are certain things you can and cannot do in those areas. For example, if, if you had a sanitary sewer line that, that bisected diagonally through this property, you couldn't put any structures over it. You know, uh, you might be able to put a driveway, uh, but you wouldn't be able to put it like, um, you know, a house or a storage building or anything like that, because within that physical space, which is still private property, that utility, first utility in this case, has the ability to use that space to service their utility.
Yes.
So it's, it's similar with the pedestrian facilities. It's the same logic.
So can you build a pedestrian walkway over the top of a water easement that's there? Can, can that be actually even done?
It can be. It's something that certainly we would want to, um, get with first utility district on because it would, they would both would be kind of running parallel with each other. Um, so we would want to make sure that, um, you know, that's coordinated with them.
You certainly wouldn't come back 40 feet into the yard.
Oh, no. No, we'd want to keep it as close to Boring Road as possible. We just have a.
That's where the water is.
Grass strip. Well, it is. Yeah. Um, and depending on what the, that water line, you know, its characteristics, it may not be an issue. Uh, but it's something that, that would need to be coordinated, you know, with first utility district.
Mark, I think we need to table this until we get a understanding on, uh, on, with first utility on this before we go any further with the variance.
That could be our good reason to not have to do the walkway at all.
That's what I was wondering if, you know, if there's a water line, you don't want to be digging.
Well, I mean, we still have a sidewalk. It's just, uh, uh, whether we can build on the top of it or, or we have to move or over or whatever. But, uh, I think we probably need a, uh, I mean, I guess other, all of the other commissioners need to weigh in on this, not just me, but, uh, uh, I think we probably need a little bit better understanding from first utility, uh, about what we can and can't do in that easement ourselves, uh, before we even, uh, touch on any, any type of a, uh, variance request.
Well, understand too, that there, besides the water, there's the water sewer, um, probably cable for cable TV and, and, um, and a gas line for KUB. All of that is within that space already.
Uh, not necessarily. It could be that, uh, it's on the other side of the road and whenever you have a meter, it would run across. I mean, it sounds like the water's on that side of the road, but that don't mean that the rest of the stuff is as well. It could be on the other side.
So there would be a sidewalk on top of that. Is that true, Mark?
Well, it's certainly.
On the other side of the road?
Part of it. I mean, it's, then that happens. I mean, we, we have utilities under sidewalks all over town. I mean, there's just not enough physical room, um, to get everything without having no conflicts anywhere. Uh, so it's really not that uncommon to have a pedestrian facility, uh, that's over a utility. Um, if you go into subdivisions that have the sidewalks, um, then, you know, many of those are going to have utilities that are either directly under them or certainly cross them. Um, so it's, like I said, it's not really that uncommon. It, it's something that we would need to, if you're trying to establish the dimension of an easement, that would certainly be something that we would need to, um, have a discussion with first utility district on. In terms of where the pedestrian facility easement would need to be, um, from their perspective.
Well, I think to answer, I think to answer their question, we, we need to go there first before we get, uh, and, and have a better understanding. Uh, but before you start talking, what, how much more easement or if any easement or, or whatever you would need, I think we probably need to do that.
This is Commissioner, this is Commissioner Green. Uh, I think from what I've heard is that the way that the item is written, the variances, that the property owner is, is unwilling to go forth with the subdivision if we try to approve it that way. So it sounds like that we need to also change the way it's being submitted to something that's workable for both the town and for the property owner. Cause it looked like as is, it's going to be, according to what the property owner stated, it's, it's going to be a no-fly for this, for this, the way it's written now.
This is Commissioner St. Clair. I kind of agree with the same lines. That's what I was ready to say, but I would add, we've got the legacy families in this company. And with a small subdivision like this, we're not talking about multi-acreage and large subdivisions are going to change hands to, you know, 70, 80, 100 homeowners. Uh, we need to find something that's workable here and, uh, between, there was some kind of idea between one piece of property, the other, what have you. I'd like to see Tom Hale enter into some discussion with Mark and, and, and as a part of also looking at this, see what can we do? And, uh, and maybe there's something that, uh, that can be had.
This is Commissioner Myers. My understanding is if we approve this variance, the actual construction of the sidewalk or the walking trail would actually not occur until the balance of their farm or their acreage would be subdivided. So it, we're, we're not talking about necessarily lots 1R1 and 1R2, but we're talking about the rest of their property. So it may be that if that's never subdivided, then there's, then the cost of constructing a walking trail would, would not be borne on the homeowner.
Just as our entire property, R1 and R2, that's all our, that's our complete property. He was referring to property next to it being sold and subdivided, I thought.
Yeah, I'm talking about the 15 acre tract on.
The Smith, the Smith.
The east, if that's ever been subdivided.
And I don't think we want to leave a, you know, out there where in the future they have to provide it because that's the sort of damocles hanging over, you know, a small property owner.
Right, yeah, right.
I think we need to doodle on this and take all our, all the, you know, creativity we can with, and still try to be consistent. Let's see if there's something we can do to help this situation. I just hate to see a bird put on a legacy family like this.
We appreciate you saying that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I agree as well, but I think we need to make sure that we're, we're, we give the first utility on this and, and then.
That's a part of it, yeah.
I think that this, this request needs to be have a little bit of a rewrite based on, on what we learned from first utility. I think we're, we could make something work out like what Ed said and John said. So I, but I do think working with first utility to find out what that is. And I know Noah does that quite often. He, he may have a little bit more life than what we're seeing. But if we have a little bit of understanding on that, then maybe a little bit of a rewrite on what the request is as far as the variance, so that we can stay, stay consistent the best we can with what we're facing here on this complete stretch of road. That we're going to have a, eventually have a, a walking trail because we, we've got the one, the one that's, but the other one there, and it does need, we need to have connectivity on it. So that's where we're really consistent on is, is going after connectivity. So I believe that that would be a good, good thing, good conversation to have with first utility and then, and then maybe look at a little bit of a rewrite.
This is Commissioner Myers. I think my misunderstanding was, I thought the Cattrells and the Smith, I thought that was the same family. I thought they also owned the 15 acres to the east of them. And so I, I think the reality is, is what they're saying is no, they don't own that. So, so that's, that's different in my book. I thought they owned all of it.
We, we do not own the 15.
The Smiths are my wife's cousins.
We're all related.
Okay, the Cattrells be okay with doing what we were requested there as far as learning a little bit more before we go any further with this?
I think so. We, we still are not able to financially put in what you're asking us to put in at whatever time. So we just wanted to make sure that that was clear to you.
Yeah, we're clear on that, ma'am. We just, we need, we need measurements and.
Yeah.
And, and an understanding on, on what we can and can't do.
Right.
That, that's, this will affect the whole stretch of road, so.
Right.
Yep.
You'll probably, you'll need to amend that motion, Mayor and Noah, as y'all made the original motion, if you want to recommend postponement until we can, look into other options and talk with first utility district.
Yeah, I made that motion, I guess you could say.
Well, yeah, you'll need to, otherwise we've got a, we've got a motion and a second. We have to vote on it unless we amend it and then I second your amended motion.
Okay. My, my motion was to table the, the complete discussion until we could get a, a clear understanding of the, of what we can and can't do in the variance.
To defer.
Yes.
And I'm good with that, I'll, I'll second that. I do have a question for the, the, the Cattrell family. I do think the easement's important, but it, just so we kind of know what direction we're going in. In principle, are they comfortable with granting the easement without compensation? And assuming they do not have to foot the bill for the sidewalk?
Yes.
Yeah.
That, that, and that, that helps us moving forward. No, okay, I think we've got, we've got some, we've kind of got our, our work to be able to, to move forward and do a little bit more research and hopefully look at this again next month.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Noah, you second that, and so, Mark?
All right, Chairman Holliday. Commissioner Russ.
Commissioner Russ, aye.
Commissioner Green.
Commissioner Green, aye.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Commissioner St. Clair, aye.
Commissioner Williams, or Mayor Williams, sorry.
Mayor Williams, aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Myers, aye.
Okay, and that motion passes six zero. We'll put that back on next time, assuming we have a discussion with first utility district, which we'll definitely try to do, probably have to meet out there potentially, so.
Okay.
Can you get back to them on a resubmital on the variance before the date that they need to have it resubmitted?
Oh, yeah, we can, yeah, I'm not worried about that. We'll keep them on the agenda. It's just, we'll just have to figure out what makes sense and what is still being consistent with those, those two house lots on the Smith property.
Okay, there won't be any miscommunication there.
Mark, you should be, you should be good. You, you've got the public notification already out there, so we shouldn't, shouldn't have any problem keeping them on the agenda for next month, assuming we can get the information from FUD.
Yeah, because we'll, we'll probably need that to know, you know, where the easement would need to go. Pedestrian facility easement, so.
Will you just let me know what my homework needs to be, if anything, Mark?
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, have we squared away with the voting on this?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, we'll move on to item number six, discussion in public hearing on a preliminary plat for the Meadows on McPhee 933 and 1013 McPhee Road, parcel 019 and 01404, tax map 162, 32 acres, 68 lots, zone R dash 1 OSR, Radley Engineering applicant. And we have some variances on this one also.
Yeah, we do. This is the, a property on west side of McPhee Road South, McPhee Park. It was the Ted Gibson Farm and then part of the Velma Seal property. There was a concept plan that was approved in November of 2020. And since that time, the property's been rezoned to open space residential. This proposed subdivision involves actually 67 building lots. And then there's a main loop street with, that connects two places onto McPhee. There's walking trail and vehicular connections to adjoining properties. And this particular item was discussed at the staff developer meeting on March the 2nd. And some of the things that we talked about, there's a couple of road sections that are relatively close to what appear to be depressional areas, sinkholes. And that was discussed a little bit with the applicant. We certainly don't want another farm at Willow Creek situation where the town is going to spend a lot of money fixing something after the fact. Then we talked a little bit about providing for more functional open space, which I think their revisions addressed that in my mind. And then the fact that there would need to be a variance request from the driveways and other accessways ordinance, from the requirement that driveways be at least 400 feet apart on arterial street like McPhee. And then a variance from the subdivision regulations dealing with the design speed as it relates to vertical curves for residential streets. In this case, it would be Scarlet Sage Drive and Red Poppy Drive. So we will need to take action on two variances before we take action on the plat. Let me just scroll through some of the pages. This is a grading plan. You can kind of see there's a stormwater detention here up toward the front and in the southwest part of the property. The road connections, again, stubbing to the north and south, consistent with our connectivity requirements. Streetscape plan does have street trees and it has traffic calming islands that are dispersed throughout the subdivision. And you can see it's pretty heavily landscaped. This is the front part that is along McPhee Road. And wisely, they're adding a lot of plant material there and it helps buffer the house lots from McPhee Road and the noise and traffic that you see there. Then this is kind of the, the west part of the development and the landscaping around the stormwater detention basins and the street trees and then buffering along portions of the transmission line easement. The, as we talked about with the rezoning request, there is a 100 foot transmission line easement that runs through the property. And they have, they've worked in a walking trail, really a kind of a recommendation and suggestion to the staff within the space. It is an open space lot, so they're making that open space more functional. And so that's kind of an overview of the project. It would be similar probably in terms of lot sizes to what you see probably with Brass Lantern to the north. And so, I guess unless you all have any questions on that, we can proceed with discussing the two variance requests before we start with the discussion of the plat. I don't have any citizen comments on this particular item. As I noted earlier, there is, there are two variances. The first is from driveways and other accessways ordinance. And that requires that new access points be at least 400 feet from any existing driveways or access points on an arterial street, on either side of the street. And really, there's no, there's no place that you could put the accesses and you wouldn't need a variance from this spacing requirement. The applicant has actually included two access points and this is something that the staff supports and encourages to have more than one way in and out of a development. Not only do you have it for this subdivision, but they, they have connections going north and south when those properties develop, that there'll be an opportunity to access those properties as well. So it's consistent with the, our connectivity requirements and goals in our land use plan, in our subdivision regulations to have the two access points. And by having those two, there's just no way to put them out there that they're within, you know, that they're 400 foot clear of any other access points along McPhee on the other side of the road. I think, as I was looking at this earlier today, the, on the north end, the north street there is about 122 feet to the nearest driveway north of that, which would be Velma Seal's driveway. And on the south end, it's about 108 feet to the nearest driveway on the other side of McPhee Road, on the east side of McPhee Road. So we do support the variance request. The access points proposed by the applicant are more than 400 feet apart themselves and they seem to be logically placed in relation to site distance. So we do support this variance request. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Mark, do we need a, a motion at this point?
Yes.
Mayor Williams will make the motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner St. Clair with second, based on the rationale presented.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about that variance? If not, I'll do a roll call vote. The motion is to approve the variance based on staff's comments there. Commissioner Holliday, Chairman Holliday.
Approve.
Commissioner Russ.
Commissioner Russ, aye.
Commissioner Green.
Commissioner Green, approve.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Commissioner St. Clair, aye.
Mayor Williams. Mayor Williams.
Mayor Williams, approve.
Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Myers, aye.
Okay, the motion for that variance is approved by a vote of six zero. The second variance is related to the subdivision regulations and it's a variance to lessen the design speed from 35 to 30 miles per hour in relation to verti, to vertical curves for residential streets. This is something that, again, the staff does support this variance. You know, for some time, we've been trying to slow traffic. That's why we have these traffic islands and these newer subdivisions and try to have, unless it's in a downtown setting where you kind of want a grid system, we'd rather have curvier roads, not long straight roads that just encourage fast driving. And the same goes for these vertical curves. The more you flatten out the land, the more grading you have, first of all. And then also the faster the road becomes. So we do support this variance request because we feel that it fulfills the objectives of the town in its case. Anybody have any?
Motion on that, and then we'll discuss it.
Questions on that?
Mayor Williams makes the motion.
To approve the variance for the rationale presented.
Mayor Williams, a second.
Okay, Mark, roll call please.
Anybody have any questions on that one?
Mayor, Mayor Williams, this is common sense. The islands, we know that that slows people down and a good example is Brass Lantern for a small subdivision. I think it's a smart move. That's all I got.
It's something that I know we talked about a little bit at the staff developer meeting and we're probably going to be looking at the subdivision regulations in general as it relates to some of these standards and requirements. Not that they're bad standards, but looking at them and making sure that, that they're flexible enough to promote the, the objectives of town. And slowing traffic is definitely an objective of our town, I think. So with that, I'll do a roll call on the variance. Chairman Holliday.
Approve.
Commissioner Russ.
Commissioner Russ, aye.
Commissioner Green.
Commissioner Green, approve.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Commissioner St. Clair, aye.
Mayor Williams.
Mayor Williams, approve.
Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Myers, aye.
And the motion passes a vote of six zero on that variance. And then the next action is the preliminary plat itself. We have 11 subject twos. I'll just kind of review those briefly, just coordinating the street name signs with the public works director. I think one thing, Russ, in the plans, it called for a six inch and a three inch for the lowercase, I think it's six and four. So it just something like that, it's a pretty minor comment, but I just want to make sure we don't have to redo things and that the plan reflects that, so. Any drainage to a sinkhole, I think there is some proposed drainage to one of the sinkholes and that obviously just has to be consistent with their sinkhole ordinance. Let's see if I can highlight that one. I'm working from home, so I'm not sure if my. If I'm going to be is. Kind of, there's a storm through there directed to that depressional area. That's what we're talking about with that one. Third one is extend the trail to stub to the west and to the south. And really what, and I do commend the applicant for ending the trail. From McPhee through the transmission line easement, what we're asking there is, is really where this kind of comes in with the sidewalk. And it, part of the problem there is photography. Just trying to get some way to stub it to the west there and then also. Kind of working with the modified contours that would be related to the tension basin to get a. A trail that kind of work with that on contour down through the south, that's what that. That comment's talking about. Fourth comment was just making sure that, you know, that these roads. Terminate in a manner that they can be easily tied into when these properties to the north and south have developed. Let's see, I'm looking here. Some of the landscape islands have some utilities that are going through them. And most of the islands have plum trees that are proposed. So we just want to make sure, it's not necessarily a bad thing, but we just need to. Maybe look at that and coordinate that with utility placement and or replacement. It may not be an issue with the way it's being proposed, but I would, would note that, that there are some. Areas where there's utilities that run through the traffic calming islands. Walking trail easement should be shown on sheet two, that's a very minor comment. Entrance seven is just a, a comment that's pretty standard that the entrance sign and landscaping has to be. Visual resource that can be aboard. Another standard comment is the letter of credit for erosion control. As well as the drainage permit fee. And then a couple of engineering related comments were radius returns. Should be a 630 curb and gutter tied to 630 curb along McPhee Road. And then the walking trail that's in the transmission line easement because apparently. They may drive over that if they need to, to add. An additional two inches of binder. For that, in addition to the, to the normal cross section of a walking trail, so that. That's the comments that we had on the plat itself, subject to those being addressed. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat.
Mark, this is Commissioner Green. I'm a little confused on the number three. The way you drew it in isn't the same that I think that I saw on one of the previous slides you had up here. For that walking trail.
Number three. Oh yeah, I didn't do a very good job drawing that in, did I?
Go back, go back to another drawing, one of the drawings shows a trail, I thought it was above. On your drawing, above where you drew yours in, right there, see?
I'm going to erase all this.
Well, their drawing doesn't show any trail where you. Drew it in there.
They have a trail, let me just show you what, I'm right now. One of the things, yeah, they've got a trail here.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
What I was asking is, and you may have to kind of do it at an angle, is. Providing for that western connection. And then also, since this is going to be regraded to the south. Is to try to follow contour along, maybe even the top of that detention basin. And tie that trail down to the, to the south. So when those properties are developed to the west and south with the same property right now.
So what are you, what are you asking them to do there from the, from the cul-de-sac?
It would be adding this section along contour. On the detention basin and then just. This section's already proposed as well.
Yeah, I got that part. So I guess we need to make sure they're okay with that because it's not shown on their drawing at all.
No, that's why I suggested it as, just to provide for that. Tie into those properties.
Okay, thank you.
Especially since they're re, they're grading that area anyway down here in the southwest.
Okay, Russell, Mark, have we, do we have our motion for?
It's Commissioner St. Clair, I move for approval, based on the 11.
Mayor Williams with second.
Okay.
Now discussion.
Yeah. Russell, go, go ahead, tell us who you are and give us an address.
Yes, thank you, sorry, I was raising my hand over here, but. Russell Rackley, P O Box 30456, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37930. The applicant here, we're, most of the comments are general in nature. We do have an issue with a couple of them and let's talk about number three with the walking trails. Originally, we had walking trails along the, the southwest. Boundary of the property, along contour, along the wet weather conveyance that flows from the McPhee Park all the way down to Boyd Station Road. It was interrupted and it was not interconnected and at staff review, they wanted all that connected. And so I voiced it then that, that we can build the. 3,000 feet of walking trail up through the, the power line easement and tie it into the sidewalks, which by the way. We have sidewalks on one side of every road, including the stub roads. And then connect to the, to the north that you'll see on, I guess, the left side of your screen of this layout. But, but not try to tackle that steep grade to get down through the tree line and, and get along the conveyance to tie the walking trail into the south. I understand, you know, it's nice to have greenway trails along a conveyance, even though this doesn't have water in it year round. It is a, just a wet weather conveyance. But there, there's other problems, the, the, the top of the berm's not wide enough to put a trail on. It's a very constrained area and eliminate, to limit grading and disturbance. It's, it's, it's graded at the maximum slope of, of two and a half to one, both on the inside and outside of the pond. With just a six foot wide flat area on top, which is required by engineering standards. So there's not enough room on top of the berm and then, and then you can never get off of the berm. So the alternative is to go below it, to cut some more trees and go below it, but, but, but then you've got to put in a big culvert. Because you, you're below a pond with water discharging out of it. So as I stated in the staff review meeting, we can put a trail through the easement, which is a considerable more expense. But, but, but we're not going to connect a trail to this, to the south and, and rely on the sidewalk interconnectivity. For pedestrian ways from any future development that may or may not happen to the south. Or, or that will most likely happen, but who knows when to the south. Would be, the pedestrian would, would be via sidewalk instead of a, a greenway trail. And unless at that time, there was a greenway trail through that other property that somehow had an opportunity to connect the. The 150 feet or so across our open space to connect to the property to the north and work its way up to the. To the McPhee Park, so that, that's our first thing is, is comment number three. We feel like we're providing, we're meeting the intent of the Town of Faragut ordinances. And zoning requirements for open space and, and usable open space and pedestrian connectivity. And so we would ask that, that, that you approve the plan as, as submitted. And omit comment number three requiring additional connectivity. Due to the slope and, and the natural grade in that area would make it very difficult to achieve a. A, a trail that, that people would actually want to be on. Our, our other concern is. Relating to the trails is, is the last comment, number 11, just, just so you know. And, and I understand that is an L C B overhead power line easement, it is a transmission line easement, it is not a distribution line. It is a transmission line, these are, this is, these are major towers that are, were just recently reconstructed. In, in the last five years or so. The, the, the request to add two inches of binder increases the cost from 50%. So that section of trail goes from, from $38,000, it adds an additional $17,000. Just to add that two inches of binder, which in, in my humble opinion. If, if they needed to get in there with a truck, wouldn't make a bit of difference. The, the, the trucks that they use to service those lines, the two inches of binder isn't, isn't going to make any differences. Is, is, the trail's not going to hold up anymore. I, I don't know where this came from, it wasn't on the initial, of course, that this. Granted, the, the trail wasn't there on the initial submittal, so that's why it wasn't on the staff comments that were re-reviewed a few weeks ago. But I, I just don't think that it adds a considerable, the, the, the benefit cost isn't there. To add the extra binder when, if and when they need to get a truck. Most likely these lines, if and when serviced will be via aerial. They're such large lines and large pulls, they most likely will do them with aerial vehicles and, and not. Ground based trucks, although they do reserve the right, it is their easement to get in there and maintain as necessary. So I understand that. The, the comment number 10 about the, the, the curb returns at the connection to McPhee. It, it's a bit, it's a bit open ended. I, I would ask that, that that be restated. Just to say that we'll work with the town engineer to come up with a detail on where the, the 30 inch integrated curb and gutter terminates. And where we transition to the extruded curb that the rest of the subdivision is doing. And the reason I bring that up is that at, at both of our intersection, there is continuous sidewalk and there will be a curb cut. For a ADA handicap ramp to cross, for the sidewalk to continue across the access. So the way that that comment is stated, it, it doesn't make sense to run. The, the, the much larger integrated curb and gutter through and then go saw cut it out to put. An ADA ramp for the continuous sidewalk going along McPhee. And I think that we can come up with a detail on where to transition that around that curb cut. So that, so that we're not putting stuff in and then taking it back out. Additionally, the, the, the north side of both entrances, those curbs don't need to be regular. Curb and gutter like on McPhee because they need to be what's called a spill gutter. They need to actually kick the water back out instead of catching the storm drainage. Because you want the storm drainage to continue on down McPhee Road. So it's, it's a little bit of, of a, a technical detail. I just, I'm, I'm not opposed to working with the town engineer to come up with a specific detail. For how to, how to, how to transition from one curb type to the other. I just, I feel like that, that comment number 10 is, is a little open ended and it's, and it's phrasing that doesn't. Could possibly hold up our permit on, on moving forward if it's the will of, of the planning commission to approve us tonight. I just want to make sure that we have a, a much more defined or more specific. Means to achieving the end of, of having approved plans and, and having everybody onboard and on the same page. And move forward with construction. And with that, that's, that's all I have and I'm, I'm willing to answer any questions.
Mark, before we go to the planning commissioners, do you have any more comments?
Mark, you're muted, I think.
You're muted, Mark.
Sorry. The last two comments that Russ was talking about was from the town engineer, so I, I'm fine with him working that out as far as the radius. Return to logic behind the extra binder from, and that was from the town engineer too, was to give it a more substantial. Composition to account for the potential of those heavier trucks using that section of walking trail. Because the town will be taking that walking trail over and we don't want. To have, to redo it like we did part of Everett Road a couple of years ago. As far as the walking trail, step down to the south. And we were just trying to figure out. A larger trail system down through that section. I don't know if it would make sense to have a walking trail instead of a sidewalk coming down. Wild Basil Street to basically surface a walking trail. Connection that, the property to the south, let me drop that in here. Be a lot shorter section, it's soon as sidewalk right now, but let's say the property to the south develops and. Maybe they have a walking trail. And instead of the walking trail being over in this area here. This, instead of a sidewalk, this becomes a walking trail so that walking trail network in the south. That. I don't know if that, that gets you a walking trail that stubs to the south. He's got one that steps to the north here in this section. Again, what, what I was looking at was trying to have a, a walking trail actually that does stub.
Mark, I just feel like everything to the south is just so steep that it would be a very problematic, both in grade of trail and, and maintenance of trail. It would be very problematic on the south side.
Are you talking about even on the Wild Basil Street?
Well, no, no, I meant to the, I'm sorry, north, southeast, to the west side of the property off that cul-de-sac. It's, it's very, it's very grade limited. Now, Wild Basil, if, if, if you want asphalt instead of a sidewalk. Those lots are sized for the, you know, since Faragut doesn't have a corner, a corner lot allowance for setbacks on the non-driveway side. So it's, it's still a 20 foot setback along Wild Basil, even though the driveway will be off of Red Poppy. So if we can get a walking trail in there without impacting the, the, that lot, then I'm fine with that. That's, that, that's something that we can definitely achieve. The grass strip may need to go from six foot to. Narrower, I guess, three foot going from a five foot to an eight foot trail. Excuse me. Oh, I hope I got my mute on.
That would get you a walking trail, you know, that could tie into a larger walking trail that might be developed.
Well, I think to the south, now, keep this in mind, the, the property to the south, which you can't see my cursor, but it, it wraps around and has an inset. That, that, that corner at the end of our cul-de-sac on Scarlet Sage, that is the property to the south. So there is an opportunity to run a trail along the property to the south. That would get very close with a, a very short segment through the power line easement potentially in the future. For connectivity, now that's, that's some trail that the town would have to negotiate with somebody or, or put in themselves. And as it was, it was said in the, the prior item, the town, town may need to build, build some, some trail to connect. Some sidewalks to connect, to create their, their connectivity. Instead of, you know, solely relying on, on, on people who are, who are developing property or subdividing property to create that for them. But, but there is opportunity, that property to, to the south wraps all the way around and comes up. And that's only, those, those lots on that cul-de-sac are, are, are 140 deep. And then, and then you got a 40 foot, so 180 feet, so you're like plus 25 foot buffer. You're 190, 205 feet across the property. With, with that open space we have extended through that very steep area down through the, the wet weather. With, with that open space we have extended through that very steep area down through the, the wet weather conveyance and back up the steep slope going to the south. Um, that is mostly power line easement and, and unusable. Other than, um, unusable for, for development. It's perfectly usable for green space and, and natural area. So that's, that's my only concern is, is not just the, the, uh, the cost implications of putting it in, but the, the physicality and the engineering of, of getting something designed that would work, that would be at grades that would be accessible, um, that will be acceptable and accessible. And, and then the, uh, the, the other concerns of maintenance and, and drainage, um, being below a pond. I mean, if I've got a 30-foot, uh, sorry, 30-inch diamond pipe coming out of that pond. If I put a greenway trail below it, I've got, it's a greenway trail. It's a town easement. It's got to be reinforced concrete. It can't be any other material. So now that's a, that's a 30-inch pipe under a greenway trail, which is, which is a, a huge expense and a potential, a potential issue if things are off just a little bit and you get a big storm and, and now the trail's underwater and, and then, and then we're dealing with it again. So I would like to stay away from that area down there. Just from, not just from a cost, but from a, an engineering standpoint, it just doesn't make a lot of sense uh, on this side of the creek or, or the, the conveyance. It's technically, it's not a creek. It's, it's a wet weather conveyance. But I would say last night it was carrying some water.
And one thing Russ, you probably need to look at is to taper this transition here. You may shorten sidewalk, but where that walking trail and sidewalk come together to make that more gradual. Cause it's a very abrupt kind of, uh.
I, I understand. I, I did that for grades. I did that to get a little bit more length so that the grades would, uh, not be as steep. I can shorten it up, but, but the, uh, the greenway trail would get a little steeper. Getting into the transition, that, that extra, that extra 15 feet on the greenway trail to extend it out to that point allows me to have the grade a lot softer than coming straight in to connect. So I, I understand it's an acute angle, which isn't ideal. But, uh, but given the topo, topography and the grades of the area, I think that, uh, I think it works pretty well the way it is, but, but, uh, I'm willing to, uh, change it. I got, I got no problem with that.
It would test your cycling ability. I can tell you that.
Well, uh, I, I hate to take the floor, but I just have to ask Commissioner Myers, are, are you in Colorado or are you in Montana?
I'm in, uh, Whitefish, Montana.
I knew it. I saw the sign that said inspiration and I've, I've skied into the inspiration trail behind you. So right on, good on you. Sorry about that. I just, I had to ask.
You embarrassed me.
There was still daylight wherever he was at.
That's right. That's right. I was looking at my clock going, well, he's not around here, but, uh, no, you, uh, the, uh, it's a blue run, but the inspiration trail was a plaque on, on the wall behind you when you first, uh, your first setup of the day. And I was like, that's, that's Whitefish, Montana. I know it is. Good on you. Hope you're having fun.
I am, thanks.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Green. I guess I'm, want to know where we are with the 11 recommendations. Are we doing away with number three and we okay with 10 and 11? Or what are we going to do here?
It sounds like to me we needed to, or to maybe the staff with Mark and Russ working out the comment on number three. And then, uh, and also number 10 with the town engineer. But number 11, I think that, uh, personally, I understand the point that Russ is making, but I think we stay with that one. Unless he can convince the town engineer otherwise.
Uh, just, just so I can clarify, on number 10, I'm okay with the comment in general in meaning, but the way it's phrased for the record is a little open-ended. I just, if, if it just said, work with the town engineer to determine the transition point for, from, from the, uh, from the, the Mcfee Road curb to the extruded curb. I'm okay with that. I can come up with the detail and I can work with, with Daryl and Brandon and figure out, you know, where that, where it makes the most sense to transition from one to the other.
That's what I was implying, Russ. Number 11 with the town engineer to convince him otherwise.
Um, I'm willing to work with him on that and talk with him. Uh, my only concern is that it's, it's not really going to make a whole lot of difference. And I think the probability of actual, um, heavy trucks being through that easement are slim and nil in the next, in, in the next 20 years. I mean, it, it just, it's a brand new line. It's a heavy line. They probably ran that line with, uh, again, with aerial equipment, helicopters and such. Um, I don't, I don't see them. It, it's, it's not like a, a distribution line where they have big, big bucket trucks. So I, I'm willing to talk with them about it, but I, I certainly do not want to hold up, um, approval, uh, over, over adding two inches of binder, um, to, to the greenway trail.
That's why I don't, I personally don't want to, to, being an engineer professional, generally, I don't want to against our town engineer. That's what they, they want to have without them in the dialogue. And, uh, I understand your points, but, uh, I'm, I don't want to amend the, the motion to eliminate number 11.
Okay. Well, can, can we just, uh, work with the town engineer for a cross-section that is acceptable to the town for the trail within the easement? And, and allow me, allow me to work with him and, uh, and, and get his input and we can do our engineering thing back and forth, um, between the two of us and talk about specifics and details that, that, uh, the minutia that quite frankly is, that, you know, y'all don't necessarily need, need to spend your time on, engineering math and such and, and, uh, and come to a conclusion on that. I just don't, I don't want it phrased so open-ended that it becomes difficult to, uh, to, to meet the conditions in order to get the permit to move forward.
Well, I'm comfortable with, uh, with that. How about the other commissioners?
I'm also comfortable with working that out with, uh, town engineer and with Mark.
Commissioner Russ, I'm also comfortable with that, uh, recommendation.
Commissioner Myers, I'm, I'm comfortable with that as well. Also, I'd like to make a comment about the, the connection to the south, the pedestrian connection to the south. I, I would prefer to see the, the connection on Wild Basil be a sidewalk. So it's consistent with the rest of the neighborhood, being that it's going to be back behind the curb. I, I also, I don't think the connection, the redundant connection for the walking trail is necessary to the other, to the south as well. But so kind of three things, the Wild Basil connection, I think should be a sidewalk to match the rest of the sidewalks. Uh, I'm okay with the variance of, with not having another walking trail connection to the south. However, I do think it is important to have a walking trail connection somehow to the west. And, and I, I, we've discussed it kind of back and forth a little bit, but, uh, I wanted to kind of go on the record with kind of those three things.
Mayor Williams, I agree with Noah.
So I guess maybe the amended, uh, motion would be to, uh, subject to items two and four through nine, uh, with items three, item three being, uh, to work with, uh, Mark on, uh, incorporating the, the comments that they've heard relative to the stub to the west and the sidewalk comment. And, uh, the angle for the, and other items that Mark brought up and, and Russ brought up. And for item, uh, 10 and 11 to be worked out with the town engineer.
Yeah, I'm glad Ed's having to craft that motion and not mine.
I'll, I'll second that. Sounds great.
I'm jealous because they like to be out there trout fishing.
Mayor Williams, could you second that motion? Cause I think you made the original second.
Yes, I sure did.
Okay. All right.
Okay. And Mark, you have all of that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll amend number three to coordinate, uh, with the applicant on trying to figure out a connection to the west. We'll leave the sidewalk, Wild Basil Street would remain a sidewalk and I, and I, I don't disagree with that. I think that makes sense. And then the last two items will coordinate that with the town engineer. Uh, we definitely want to make sure that the walking trail that ultimately gets built in the easement is something that we don't have to go in and repair. You know, that's not, uh, up to a standard that can handle the anticipated equipment that would, might be using it. So that is, that is a concern for us. We don't want to have to, to, uh, have something built and then a few years later redo the whole thing. So, I think it'll be important to have that conversation with the, with the town engineer. So with that amended motion, I guess I'm ready to do roll call, vote on the plat itself. Uh, Chairman Holiday.
Approved.
Commissioner Russ.
Commissioner Russ, aye.
Commissioner Green.
Commissioner Green, approve.
Commissioner Sinclair.
Commissioner Sinclair, aye.
Mayor Williams. Mayor Williams.
Mayor Williams, approve.
Uh, Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Myers, aye.
Okay. So the plat motion passes over six, zero.
I thank you everybody for their time. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
Item number seven, discussion on a zoning map. Amendment request for the property referenced at parcel 069, tax map 142, north of Old Enkles Building, 20 acres to change the zoning from R dash one, which is rural, single-family residential to R dash six, multiple-family residential, Horn Properties Incorporated applicant.
And on this one, I do have some, uh, citizen comments. And after, I guess after I read these and we take a motion, we'll, I'll read those into the record. So this, this, uh, rezoning was discussed as a workshop item in January and it was postponed last month.
Mark, this is discussion only without a motion?
Yeah, this is a, oh, I'm sorry. You're right. It's discussion.
Thank you.
I'm still in a voting mode. Sorry. Yeah, this is discussion only. Uh, this is a 40, actually a 41 acre tract and the request is to rezone about 20 acres of it to R six, which is multi-family residential, basically apartment, uh, zoning district. The property is currently zoned R one and that's the current zoning map. Uh, R one is a rural residential zoning district that, requires a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet and, uh, really a developable density of less than two units per acre. Uh, so the request to rezone it to R six is a substantial increase in meta-density, uh, up to 12 units per acre. So the one thing we talked about in January was the future land use map and the area that they're requesting for rezoning, in fact, for most of the whole property is, uh, shown as medium-density residential on the future land use map and that, that was broken up a few years ago to make it more logical and consistent with other residential land uses. And it specifies the development density of, uh, six to eight dwelling units per acre. So, uh, as it's presented right now, the rezoning request is inconsistent with the future land use map. Cause the request would allow for 12 units per acre on this 20 acre area. And future land use map limits that to eight, uh, units per acre. So unless the, there's a request to amend the future land use map or the rezoning request, staff would not be able to support the rezoning as it is currently. Also ultimately before this goes for to the board of mayor and ottoman, we'll do the traffic, uh, impact study on this rezoning request. So that's kind of a, a overview of the request. It's very similar. It really hasn't changed since the last, discussion. Uh, some, one aspect of the concept plan changed with the road connection to Boring Road. But other than that, uh, the rezoning request itself is, is not changed. So, and there has not been a request to amend the future land use map to request a high-density residential, which is what they would need to request for the zoning to be consistent with the plan. And like I said earlier, I've got a few citizen comments on this if you want me to read those into the record. Is that okay, chairman? Or do you want, I guess I probably need to make a motion second first before I do that.
Just for discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. You're going to have to get me off of this voting. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Losing my mind here. What little mind I had. All right. So let me just go ahead and, and read those, uh, those comments into the record. And then, uh, we can open it up for discussion with the applicant. The first comment is, let me get these out here. This one is from John and Michelle Holtzreger. We object to the plans outlined, and this is actually for agenda items seven and eight. We object to the plans outlined on agenda items seven and eight. And to the near-continuous parade of proposals for building more apartments in Farragut. The plans presented tonight have not addressed the problems identified in the last round. Those include inconsistency with surrounding residential density, lack of transitions, negative traffic impacts and open space requirements. The only major change since the last time these proposals were presented is that now we have a town center moving forward that includes plenty of multi-family. I fail to see the need for more apartments in Farragut. Instead of trying to force-fit multi-family projects into low-density residential areas, how about we ask Horn Properties to build something we actually need, like smaller, single-family homes. Next comment is from Don Schreger. Uh, and he is the homeowners association president for Baldwin Park, uh, on behalf of the residents in Baldwin Park. And his comment is also his personal comment. He resides at 301 Bernie Circle. With respect to agenda item seven, issues with the request to change the zoning from R one to R six. One, this is inconsistent with surrounding low-density residential. Two, there is a lack of transition density. Three, this will have a negative traffic impact. We request that you do not approve this zoning change request. Next comment is from Paul and Karen Johnson at 344 Bernie Circle. Their comments are about the rezoning of parcel 069, tax map 142, 20 acres from R one to R six. Future land use for this property is designated as medium-density residential, six to eight dwelling units per acre. Applicant is requesting rezoning to allow 12 units per acre. Especially, specifically, sorry, 240 dwelling units on 20 acres. Which is at the extreme upper limit of high-density residential area. This is inconsistent with the future land use plan and we strongly recommend that the planning commission deny this request based on the comprehensive land use plan. Thank you. Extra, next comment is from J C Standifer, uh, at 430 Bernie Circle. In fact, this is approved to Boring Road from the proposed development. Boring Road must be widened and a traffic light installed on Kingski Pike. This would be a very dangerous intersection without a traffic light. Next comment is from Robert and Diane Osborne, three oh nine Burney Circle. "The proposed transition and buffer is not effective. Project was massive and inconsistent with the adjacent single-home neighborhoods, especially if you add in the inevitable higher-density projects that will be eventually built on the Horn property to the east of Baldwin Park. It will be a massive development right next to residential, single homes. Given the numerous new high-density developments already proposed for Farragut, this will negatively impact traffic issues and decrease the quality of life in Farragut. Low-density, single homes or nice townhomes should be built instead on these properties. We should not rezone every property that a developer wants to build much more profitable, higher-density apartments. There are already plenty of variances, or I'm sorry, plenty of vacancies at Farragut Apartments. What is really needed in Farragut are more low-density, small, single homes and townhomes. These would sell quickly right now. Demand for single homes is very high right now. There is no Farragut Town Hall provision that this proposed Horn development will always be restricted to fifty-five or sixty-five-plus age. Doug Horn stated that this may be non-enforceable at any point after he has the project built and as the apartment projects owners change. There are way too many negative impacts to the surrounding community. Our hard-working Town Hall leaders should not rezone for higher-density behind the old Ingles." Next comment is from Michael Wilson, four one two Eisenhower Street. "Good evening. While the current request does not include the future land use map change, it should. Without it, this request fails to comply with paragraph C dot nine of the R six zoning ordinance and thus the site plans could not be approved. In October twenty eighteen, FMPC modified the land use descriptions, creating high-density residential land use with a density of nine to twelve units per acre and limiting the medium-density residential land use density to four to eight units per acre. Since this time, the town has not sought to identify parcels for high-density land use. As Mr. Shiftley recently noted, the town planned to discuss the placement of high-density developments at the time they were requested. With this request, the main contention is the density transition between the R six development and existing neighborhoods. I argued against the proposed Smith Road Apartments in large part for this very reason. The R six zoning ordinance states that, quote, "This district should serve as a transition area between more intense land uses and major roads and less intense land uses. The proposed development provides such a transition from the commercial property to the south, the Old Ingles, to the residential neighborhood to the north, Baldwin Park. The transition section of the comprehensive land use plan advises to gradually increase or decrease density away from the common boundary. In this case, the developer is advising that they will place a lower-density residential development, R two, in between the R six and R three neighborhood to the north, providing them an additional layer of protection. It would seem that an R five or R four development, that is duplexes or townhomes between these two would be more in line with the COUP. Transitional R two development should be seen as a more beneficial in the existing neighborhoods as well, the developer's willingness to deed-restrict the property to a fifty-plus community help better align this development with the surrounding land uses. This would be a neat housing choice not found elsewhere in Farragut. This development supports several of the COUP's eight key strategies, in particular numbers three, four, and eight. The proposal complies with the R six zoning ordinance and the COUP with the sole exception of the current future land use map designation. The appropriate first step is to discuss a future land use map change to high-density residential for these twenty acres. This change is required to ensure that any approved plan complies with paragraph C nine of the R six zoning ordinance. Question that must be answered is, can the future land use map change be made while protecting the existing neighborhoods through the appropriate density transition? If so, it should be approved and the town should give the proposed rezoning request the same consideration as other requests. If not, the rezoning request is dead on arrival." And that's all I have on citizen comments on agenda item number seven.
Does anybody, again, this is for discussion purposes only tonight, does anybody have any questions or comments? And is the applicant represented, Mark?
Yes, I believe that is here.
Yeah, can we hear from the applicant on why he didn't request or discuss, I won't say request, but discuss the possible change to the land use map? I'm kind of at a loss here why we've got this back again without this type of discussion.
Good evening, this is Michael Patterson and Doug Horn. We wanted to present to you tonight the addition of the entrance from our future road onto Boring Road and then also propose the widening from Kingston Pike up to our new entrance here. So we felt like with that being somewhat of an incentive and then also helping with the traffic for this development, that we were going to keep the, the twelve units per acre as it was prior to the, you know, amendment of the land use plan a couple of years ago. And again, our, our proposal is that nothing's changed. It's still a deed-restricted fifty and older senior living community.
Mayor and the commission, don't forget the land use plan for six to twelve, medium-density residential for two thousand and twelve until just recent. Something happened and you paid changes here and on eighty-fourth property, which hurt both property owners. So we, that's why we submit, resubmitted at twelve per acre. And we would pay for widening Boring Road up to the entrance to the single-family section. Maybe the town could do the rest of Boring Road. But you, you change, you change the goalpost on the playing field when you change the two thousand and twelve mixed-use six to twelve per acre without even consulting the landowners. So that's where we are. We could, we can go for an up or down vote on this and then planning commission doesn't approve it, doesn't want Boring Road widened, then we can go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman and, and see what they will or state probably would reject it too because Ron's on both planning commission and Board of Mayor and and Louis' problem is too. Of course Louis has been, I think, the negative force of multifamily, pretty obvious. So we're pretty adamant about being treated fairly on this for the landowner. We've been, we've been on that forever and it was always meant for medium-density residential and we'll pay for widening Boring Road like Bob Moni did when he did the Baldwin Park. Bob Moni spent hundred thousand to widen Boring Road from Smith Road to Baldwin Park. We'll, we'll spend money to widen it up to the entrance to the single-family. So we work with the town, public, private partnership, like y'all did at Virtue Road, on the Virtue Road, we'll work with the town and the town can play for the rest of the widening Boring Road up to the other end that's already widened. But we think that's only fair, so we didn't, no, we didn't change the proposal. So we, 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 next meeting, we'll probably just ask for a vote whether you want to do this or not. But we don't think, we don't think we're being treated fairly on this. Of course, mayor knows my feelings about that. I don't think we were treated fairly with the change that's kind of fit in, slid in and the goalposts changed, playing field. That's our opinion. Nobody will probably ever change that.
Do we have any questions from the planning commission?
I was planning to put, this is Mark, I was planning to put it on for a vote next time then. Y'all can vote it up or down.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I wish they, one other thing related to the rezoning is that there is a requirement in the driveways and other accessways ordinance, I think, for a traffic impact study, so it would be probably in the best interest of the applicant to have that if they want as part of the planning commission's action on this item, but it, it, well, we can put it on for a vote either way, but I will mention that.
We, we, we're talking to Cameron Cannon to update the previous traffic study that was done to this property not too long ago, so we should be able to accommodate that.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'm ready to move on to discussion on the zoning map amendment requested for the property reference that eleven five hundred Kingston Pike, west of the Farragut Town Hall, parcel one forty-eight, tax map one forty-two, sixty-eight acres to rezone a portion of the area currently zoned O dash one to C dash one, general commercial. Rezone a portion of the area currently zoned O dash one, B dash one buffer, and R dash one rural, single-family residential to R dash two, general family residential, to R dash six, multiple-family residential, and to rezone a portion of the property currently zoned R dash two to R dash four, attached, single-family residential. Horn Property Incorporated, applicant.
Okay, this item was also discussed in January and they have made some amendments to this rezoning request. We talked about this in January. We, we talked about, we asked the applicant to go back at the transition concept in the plan, the plan. The density, proposed densities match existing densities consistent with the plan to protect existing neighborhoods from incompatible development. The revised rezoning exhibit intends to amend the rezoning request and this is what we submitted for that. They have R four attached, single-family that surrounds R six, open space multifamily residential, and then a buffer zone with the far south end of the property. The, we really, there is a conceptual layout that's part of this too, but really I think from the staff's perspective at least, the focus should be on the requested rezoning and what would be the effect of rezoning as shown, whether it's consistent with the plan and the surrounding plan of development. One thing we talked about last in January was future land use map. When this was created in two thousand and twelve, the general area, there was a number of places where they were envisioned as potentially town-centered areas. And it could be on numerous properties, wouldn't have to necessarily be on one, and this was one of the properties and that's why probably about two-thirds of it is shown as so in terms of really trying to determine what zoning is appropriate for the property, the, the thing the staff always looks at is the plan. We look at what's mapped. We also look at the wording in the plan. The plan is not a static document. It's constantly evolving. It's very dynamic to reflect the community's goals. So the plan, if you look at the language in the plan, it has some concepts in there. It's been in there since two thousand and twelve. To talk about transitions, there's in fact a policy on page twelve, an evidence packet that is, and this is where it's talking about these, these ideas of flex density and transition. And one of the policies is that densities and new developments should be compatible with existing adjacent densities. And they even kind of mapped an example actually on this property, and again, this is very conceptual. See that there's two existing residential communities that abut this property, Glen Abbey to the west and Park Place to the east. And in those areas for this property, what they're showing is a proper transition, a single-family detached residential. So that, you know, what's immediately abutting, those areas is compatible in terms of its form and density. So another thing that we talked about in January was the front part of the property several years ago, the parts that show in C one. That actually was, went all the way to second reading, rezoning the town center district, which was really a district that was created for a vertical, mixed-use town center. So that's something we asked the app to look at and maybe look at that old plan too. Because it had a lot of good elements associated with it. Doesn't appear that, that they're making any changes in that regard and that's fine. That's their right to do that. As far as the rezoning exhibit on the remainder, again, there's about seventeen acres that are shown as R four. R four again is attached, single-family, which by zoning would be compatible with Park Place, but not by density. Because what they're, Park Place actually has a development density of around three units per acre. And it kind of appears on the concept plan here that again, it's, I don't want to get bogged down in the concept, but they're looking to try to maximize the six units per acre that would be allowed in R four. So it wouldn't be consistent with that policy dealing with compatible densities that abut each other. In terms of the R four along the west, abuting Glen Abbey wouldn't be compatible in terms of zoning or density. Glen Abbey is zoned R three. And that's small lot, single-family detached, which would be incompatible with R four. Glen Abbey has a, has a development density of less than three units per acre, which again will be roughly less than half of what could be allowed in R four. And then with regards to the R six in the middle, the the comprehensive land use plan stipulates that as part of a mixed-use town center development plan, high-density residential, like multifamily, should only be in the area that's bound by South Campbell Station, Uncle Road and Kingston Pike. And the reason for that was this was some language that was recently amended in the plan, really to be consistent with the rest of the plan. It was bringing about language that's been in there since two thousand and twelve. And in that particular location, it's referenced in the amended language, there aren't any existing neighborhoods that abut that property. So there's no direct incompatibility. So there's no direct incompatibility in terms of zoning or density. And that's why that property was called out as a potential candidate for the higher-density residential consistent with language that's been in the plan since 2012. So there's really nothing that that fundamentally changed when that was amended recently, a few months ago. So really from the staff's perspective, in assessing the requests in relation to the land use plan, we would recommend that it's not compatible. There's never been, we talked about this in January, even back when the property was, was almost at second reading of rezoning. There was never a plan or discussion, to my knowledge, of multifamily being in the area that is shown at, at and as now. So that's something that's very inconsistent with, with the history of the property and plan text. So for that, I think there, you know, at this point, you know, the rezoning request would not be consistent with the plan or the surrounding plan of development should be amended accordingly. Now I do have some citizen comments as well on this one. If the chairman wants me to go ahead, I can read those into the record before we
Please go ahead, Mark.
talk with the applicant. So the first one is this comment is from Bob Crossley, the president of Park Place subdivision 503 Colonial Ridge Lane. And this is on behalf of Park Place Homeowners Association Board. And let's see here. "We, the Park Place Homeowners Association Board, are submitting comments representing the 40 homeowners of Park Place to the revised proposal submitted by Horned Properties, Inc., seeking to rezone the adjacent 84th property to be discussed at the March 18, 2021 municipal planning commission meeting. Park Place homeowners were part of the 184 citizen comments we understand were received by the town of Farragut regarding the original proposal submitted by Horned Properties, Inc. Seeking to rezone the 84th property discussed at the January 28, 21, Farragut Municipal Planning Commission meeting, comments which we also understand were 100% opposed. Opposition to the original proposed rezoning of the 84th property was that it was not consistent or compatible with Farragut's comprehensive land use plan. And yet here we are again with a subtle change, adding R4, bringing this back up for discussion before the planning commission. The R4 addition does not negate the original reasons for opposing this rezoning change, that this remains not an insignificant proposal of minimal impact or an effort to harmonize transition to with surrounding neighborhoods, the latter at the core of the Farragut COUP transitions to protect existing neighborhoods from incompatible new development and to encourage gradual transitions even within a new development, such as between blocks with different density. Policy density of new development should be compatible with existing adjacent density. With regards to the R4, attached single-family residential district addition that allows up to six units per acre, issue remains along with the R6 requested, that the density of this proposal was not compatible with the density of Park Place, single-family detached 2.96 units per acre, and Glen Abbey, single-family detached approximately 2.81 units per acre. And it remains clear that from the outset that there was, was, is no intent to abide by the COUP visionary document that is the backbone to constructively manage the future development, look and feel of Farragut. The original and revised renderings provided by Horned Properties, Inc. were meaningless as to what reality will be, as what will be would only require what is stipulated within the zoning language, far too much latitude for attracting this large. It is understood that the Ford property is part of the COUP vision as a mixed-use town center property that is currently zoned appropriately for that. At some point in time, the property will be read, will be developed, just not the original proposal by Horned Properties, Inc. or this revised rezoning the property south of the Park Place Boulevard from B1, R1. An R2 to R6 multifamily residential district that is high-density as originally proposed was an overreach. This R6 comes with no requirement other than a buffer strip. It is no transition requirement stipulated by Farragut COUP. The R4 addition does not significantly alter the issue. Additionally, both proposals seek extension of the current C1 zoning area. Apparently from Kingston Pike Municipal Center Drive to Park Place Boulevard, rezoning from office. That further pushes the envelope of incompatibility as the current office designation is highlighted in COUP as being about establishing a transition from commercial to residential. Again, this is not an insignificant proposal of minimal impact. Change the current zone will undermine the premise of the COUP as the foundational backstop to guide and protect Farragut's decisions to ensure development propositions harmonize transition to with surrounding neighborhoods. There is much at stake here. Specifically whether the COUP document, which both Mr. Ford, as a longtime resident and former mayor, Mr. Horn is a longtime resident and developer, must be aware of, can remain as the premise guiding decisions on how the future growth of Farragut evolves. Acquiesce here in risk-setting the precedent of opening door wide for challenges that will render the COUP meaningless. Cerely the Park Place Homeowners Association. And the next comment is from Don Mann, 518 Carther Lane. And this is half of the Glen Abbey subdivision. "Dear Commissioners, I am respectfully submitting this letter for two reasons. First, to express my surprise and confusion as to why this topic eight is up for discussion again after so thoroughly being reviewed at January's FNPC meeting. It was quite clear from listening to the commissioners' response after reading so many individual homeowners' letters from both Glen Abbey and Park Place, that there were overwhelming objections to rezoning any portion of the Ford property to R6. The consensus of all the commissioners who spoke at the January meeting was against the rezoning to R6 and specifically against any development of apartments on such a narrow strip of land. Now, the latest plan is to shoehorn in R4 attached single-family residential around the perimeter of the proposed R6 multifamily residential. It was noted by many commissioners that apartments have never been part of the vision for development of this specific property. Rather, or second rather, than ask the 141 homeowners of Glen Abbey to submit opinion letters so soon after they expressed their concerns in January. 56 from Glen Abbey did so then. I'm doing it as a representative and as a representative of our HOA board of directors. As the past two-term resident of Glen Abbey Homeowners Association, I've been asked by our current board of directors to express our concerns about March 18 FNPC agenda item number eight for the rezoning of Ford property. The request to rezone a portion of the area currently zoned O1 to C1 general commercial, rezone a portion of the area currently zoned O1, B1, R1, and R2 to R6, and to rezone a portion of the property currently zoned R2 to R4 is, in our opinion, incompatible with the COUP. COUP is the town's guiding principle and should not be easily deviated from on page 12 of COUP. Process for protecting existing neighborhoods while allowing greater housing choices is outlined under the headings Transitions and is quoted as follows. "To protect existing neighborhoods from incompatible new development and to encourage gradual transitions even within a new development. Following guidelines should be applied. Density different from the adjacent density is proposed. Transition should occur within the proposed development, gradually increase or decrease away from the common boundary." Furthermore, on page 12 of COUP, it reads gradual density increases are encouraged in mixed-use office and commercial developments as long as they maintain quality standards to ensure compatibility with adjacent development. On the north end, we don't believe a 35-foot buffer plus the width of Jamestown Boulevard extension maintains the quality standards to ensure compatibility with the Glen Abbey subdivision. In addition, Zone R6 has no language within it to address transition from existing neighborhoods. R6 has a much higher density than the existing adjoining neighborhoods on the south end, transitioning from Glen Abbey with only a 25-foot buffer. Then R4 attached single-family residential plus the width of the Jamestown Boulevard extension and adding in a visible roundabout resulting with R6 multifamily residential apartments is not what we view as gradual or compatible. Ford property is long north to south, very narrow east to west, which makes the gradual housing transition Glen Abbey. R3 and Park Place, R4 incompatible if any part of it is rezoned to R6, specifically R3, designated small lot, single-family residential with low-density residential. At a very minimum, any rezoning consideration for the Ford property needs to include acceptable density transition requirements to protect existing neighborhoods that it abuts. Finally, in our opinion, town of Farragut has ample apartments within its borders, either existing or proposed. We believe that apartments have detrimental effect on a community if locations are not wisely considered. Results can be a reduction of property values and quality of life for existing adjoining neighborhoods plus increased traffic. These points should be considered. Propers zoning of Ford property will enhance our town as a desirable community to live and work in. R6 zoning results in apartments are not the proper housing choice for this location. Appropriate buffer zones between existing neighborhoods needs to be insisted upon. Thank you for your consideration and the potential effect on the two established neighborhoods that border. And the next comment is from Wilson. He is at 412 Eisenhower Street. "Good evening. The current request for the R6 zoning does not comply with the mixed-use town center portion of C1 commercial zoning district. Paragraph F2M, aisles for residential use provided. It is located in the upper floors of a building that has been designed and constructed for a mix of uses or on any floors. If it is part of an approved horizontally configured mixed-use town center development plan and is within the planned commercial development zoning district. Based on the site plan provided, it appears the high-density residential or residential-only buildings that would require use of the PCD zoning district or a text amendment to the C1 zoning district. Transitioning to the existing neighborhoods is a challenge on this property. Utilizing the KGI system, I estimated the density of Park Place to be 3.22 units per acre, 50 lots over 15.5 acres. Glen Abbey to be 2.62 units per acre, 131 lots over 50 acres. Current transition from the apartments to the townhomes to the surrounding neighborhoods is 12 to 6 to 3.2 or 2.62 units per acre. This is significant. If financially feasible, lowering the number of R4 units to 80 would yield a transition of 12 to 4.71 to 3.22 or 2.62 units per acre. This would still leave a significant internal transition from 12 to 4.71 units per acre, this type of development. Apartments in the center with townhomes on the borders is a very, is a popular design in other areas of the country. It supports the walkable town center lifestyle with the varying size of units to attract single individuals as well as young families. This request should be considered using the planned commercial development zoning district. This would allow for review and tentative approval of the site plan prior to rezoning. This would also yield a lower number of units per acre. As currently proposed, this would be 4.5 units per acre. Only 80 townhomes would yield approximately 4.24 units per acre. This is much more compatible with the existing neighborhood densities while maintaining transition from the internal apartments to external borders of the property. The only challenge to this proposal is the recent changes to the COUP to limit the location of high-density residential and mixed-use town center. As was recently revealed, part of the reason this was done is specifically Farragut disminutes development. Should the developer proceed with a PCD rezoning request, the town should have clear grounds and zoning ordinance and COUP to deny such a request thus ensuring this developer receives equal considerations of it." That's all the comments that I have under agenda item number eight for this evening.
Do we have any questions or comments from anyone on the planning commission?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Green. I looked at the, the kind of the concept plan here and aside from the comments that I agree with from Mark Shipley regarding the, the densities, on the area marked as a change to C1, I added up all the floor space and I came up with 280,000 square feet of commercial property there. So I'm beginning to wonder if the town of Farragut can absorb that much commercial space in any reasonable timeframe. And I'm wondering if it, maybe it's time for the town to start, maybe commission someone to look and see what our ability to absorb and utilize that much commercial space is. That's 280,000 square feet of commercial space and nearly seven acres of parking lot around C1. And that's a lot. And of course, we already have, you know, some things going on. Obviously, the Biddle property is already being developed. We have some commercial property going in on South Lot Road. We eventually will have some going in on the Swan Farm. So I think it's a part of our responsibility to kind of look ahead a little bit for the town and make sure we're not considering approval of developments that the town just cannot absorb. And we end up with properties sitting there that's undeveloped or vacant. We still have vacant commercial properties sitting around the town right now. And I just think it may be prudent for us to, to take a serious look at our ability to absorb that property. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
This is John's comment. I look at it a little differently. I look at the fact that that front part of the property will go commercial. It's a matter of when. And, and so and it's also up to the developer and the folks that would be potential leases of that space. If they venture that will succeed, then it will succeed if it stays empty. But it's going to turn commercial. It's only a matter of question of the time and the risk that the developer is willing to take for it to be commercial. So I don't have a disagreement with the front end on commercial.
Anyone else?
This is Trevor Hobbs. Just the, as the assistant administrator and business liaison, just thought I'd just share just a little perspective on this. Keep in mind that the town of Farragut drives the majority of its revenues from sales tax. And if you look at a map of the town's zone, zoning for commercial, you'll see quite a bit of it, but that may mislead you to think we have a lot of commercial. Quite a bit of our commercial districts are, the land is actually occupied. Quite a bit of our commercial districts are, the land is actually occupied by churches and schools and uses that do not directly generate sales tax. And so just keep all that in mind that you know, the town wants to have vibrant commercial centers and we certainly need to be thoughtful about where that is. But if we want to continue to operate on our same financial model, we we, we want to be welcoming of additional commercial. Part of my role is always to look for, you know, businesses who want to locate in the town and bringing that pipeline. And we're also working to, to develop a, a larger economic development plan. And so just keep all of that in mind as well, you know, that the town's going to, you know, in my perspective, the town's going to need to have additional commercial, retail commercial if we want to have a strong financial future. That's all. Just additional thought.
Well, I'll kind of go in with what Trevor was saying is I'm a little disappointed in several of our developments that there is so little commercial. And such a wide area of it is residential. I was certainly hoping to see more commercial. I realize it's a little bit tough time right now for commercial, but then I drive through Turkey Creek and I let them think. Heck, a lot of people over here. So I, I would like to see more commercial. And I was on the planning commission when we developed the town centered zoning. So I've been on the planning commission for a while and not in all the years that I've been on the planning commission have I experienced the dissatisfaction with so many of our Farragut residents. People stopped me to complain about the, all the apartment development. And I'm not just talking about Mr. Horn's property. I'm talking about all of it. They did not move to Farragut to be in this dense of a property. Set up. They all, several of the people that have stopped me said they liked the single family homes type community that we have here. So like I say, I've, I've never experienced this kind of dissatisfaction from residents between the mail that we've gotten and the people who just happen to recognize me thanks to Michelle from the paper or people I know. They're all dissatisfied with the idea of apartments. So it makes me have, I have to stop and think about our residents that are here now are dissatisfied. And so I don't know how to balance that out at this point. That's something we're going to have to all take a hard look at. Because I'm sure I'm not the only one that's getting feedback from neighbors and friends and people that I don't even know who stopped me. So I, I think this is something that we all need to think long and hard about. Like Trevor says, we, we are driven by commercial here in the town. We live on that and there's a large group of people that live here in Farragut. And I think we can support commercial and more commercial. But it's something we all need to, to think about. And that's my input. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Mayor Williams.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I appreciate the risk takers that build in our town. It's been something that has been successful with most all of them, Mr. Horn being a, a good example. You would think that this type of commercial would be a stat commercial, which most of the time does not really lend itself to retail. It's more of office such as maybe even Mr. Horn's own personal office getting moved here from Cedar Bluff to where he's right in town, close to home, or whatever else could be in there, but it don't appear that other than maybe the main floor that you would, that you would have anything other than just office type of space. But I certainly concur with, with the homeowners that have made comment. This group here are surprisingly have really done their homework as far as land use planning and zoning and buffers and, and what is compatible. Unlike what we have experienced in the past from homeowners, this, this group here has really kind of done their homework. The, as far as compatibility, I think that we, you know, we typically want to work with risk takers to, to, to make sure that everything fits properly. And I think that we can probably continue to do this. This is just a very first second discussion and, and I think that there needs to be more along the lines to where some of the stuff can fit properly and, and, and actually adhere to the land use plan a little bit. I know when Mr. Ford and Michael Bates and them first did this back years ago, you know, they had the commercial in the front, not quite as much, but because I think that Doug has added a little bit more to it, but the when I look at what was left and remember the conversation, this was not going to be an apartment complex. This was going to have residential. And you can see by the, the original zoning like what it was whenever, I mean, whenever it fell apart. As far as whenever Mr. Bates, if you and, and Ed Ford looked at this, they, they had it drawn up there the way that they felt that it would work with more highly residential area and with no apartments and this right here would, would be closer to what would work today. You know, the, I sure appreciate the starting, starting to work on it like what we will, you know, will require to make all this work. So I feel that the commercial part of it, although it is a large commercial part, I don't know that how much of it will be actually tax producers as far as sales tax. You know, when you have lawyers offices and, and real estate, anything like that, it's, it's part of the puzzle that we need in Farragut. There's no doubt about that. But, and I think everyone has to realize that not every bit of commercial is going to, to be a tax return. But it will be a service and services, when you get up to the twenty thousand plus people in a town, you know, you need to have a diverse service and this would be a, the front part of it would definitely start fitting a diverse service. And some of it, we don't even have that what Mr. Horn is, is proposing here. We don't really have in our town. And it, it would give it some diversity that would probably assuming that the price per square foot is reasonable, then it would give, give us something that we don't have commercial wise that would may want to, you never know, we might have law offices moving in from downtown and people getting tired of driving down there and would rather be in the, in a nice development that would be closer to home and, and be closer to their customers. And most certainly free parking and step and have having to park in a parking garage downtown. So I think we still got work to do here and, but anyway, I do think we need to, to look at this more closely as far as land use and the typical zoning for what is around it. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, Chair, and I think the applicant probably is here and I'm sure they have some comments to make on this, I would assume.
Yes, thank you, Mark. Again, it's Michael Patterson and Doug Horn here. In the January meeting, a lot of the discussion was centered around condos and that Farragut is lacking new condo development opportunities. And so after that meeting, we sat down with our land planner and he had watched the, the video online and, and said that, you know, look, we realize there needs to be a transition between Glen Abbey and this property before you get to the multifamily. And so we inserted the R four there and our, our intent for the R four area is condos. Therefore, when the people that, that, the houses that back up to this property, when they look out of their, you know, backyard, they're not looking at a multifamily. They're, they're looking at condos. Or excuse me, Glen Abbey. But you know, I, one other thing too, I'm, I'm sitting here and I, I was counting some of these houses that back up to this R four zoning. It's, it's less than ten. Everybody else is internal from that. So these ten homes that back up directly to this property, they, when they go in their backyard, they would be looking at condos and not the multifamily. So we've, we've provided that transition for again, the, the ten houses that back up to this property. All the other houses in this development don't back up to it. They're in internal streets. So we're really only talking about, you know, less than ten to twelve homes here that, that will literally border this property and see these condos. And as far as the commercial, that seemed to be, I guess, kind of a welcomed addition when we first presented this plan in January. And I think now there's a little bit of oscillating. Is it too much? Is it too little? All I can tell you is that, that Doug Horn, he's been doing commercial development for forty years. There's not too many developers that can, can say that. And I can tell you in all certainty here that he understands commercial, that we, I, we understand commercial and we're confident that what we have designed here with a mix of commercial, office, medical, it works. We see this all around the southeast. This concept works. We've got two ounce parcels running Kingston Pike. We've had restaurant interest, you know, you had mentioned that lawyers offices, well, when lawyers, when they take a break at noon, they like to go to restaurants or when they get off, they like to, to do shopping and all this with intertwine and mix and, and be a, you know, oh, and yeah, obviously those, those type uses generate the sales tax that the town needs. So we feel like we've, you know, we feel like that this transition with the R four into the multifamily that it is, you know, conducive for what you all were talking about in January. And again, I'll, I'll mention too, on the Park Place, if you count these lots that have bud up to our property, again, it's, it's less than twelve lots. So really we're talking about twenty-five homes that when they look in their backyard, they will see condos. Not the multifamily that we presented to you in January. Again, the, the R four transition, we simply would, based off the recommendations that we received in the January meeting, that the town needed condos. That's what we kind of ran with. So I don't know if Doug has anything else to say, but that's, you know, that, that was the intent and purpose for those changes to this plan.
Can I ask what kind of configuration these condos are in? Are they, is it a multi-story building with condos or individual connected buildings? Or what kind of vision do you have for those?
Well, there's a lot of flexibility there and, you know, those sort of questions, I guess, you know, if we can get past the zoning, then we can work with Mark and staff and kind of get their feel for what they envision too. And, you know, we can work with them to, to make a, you know, that transition easy. But yeah, I mean, it, you know, in January, there was talk of double story condos. We kind of think single story is probably the best intended use here just based on what's currently in Farragut. You don't see many two-story or three-story condos. It's, it's primarily single story. So that's, you know, that's kind of what the market is dictating. So but, but there is flexibility. So we're open to that.
But Chair Holiday, they'd be nice condos, expensive condos.
Oh, absolutely. They're not going to be. Not to throw off on any development close by or anything, but that they'll be pretty high priced condos. So we can get, you know, some revenue, cover all the cost of the land and site work. So it'd be, it'd be very nice. But, but, but the, the multifamily, I want you to know, we've cut that down from fifteen per acre to twelve per acre. We, we've cut the multifamily in the middle down to twelve per acre. And of course, the other big advantage of this development is, you know, you straighten out Jamestown, you come across, you even have a connectivity to South Campbell Station in the future. We've provided for that. We've got more open space between the multifamily and the medical office retail. You see there's two office, two open space areas there for gathering places. We had some Michael Wilson frankly had a real good idea about that. So we've added open space there between the, the medical office retail and the multifamily. So and again, like Ed St. Clair said, you know, Eddie, of course, he's held the property for a long time and, and his price, his price may have and, and the financial downturn of oh eight, oh nine probably frustrated Michael Bates when he was proposing to do this. And we have to, you know, get an overall comprehensive development in order to buy the whole property. He, as we've said, the January meeting, Eddie, I guess Linda, I don't know if Linda agrees with Eddie or not, but Eddie doesn't want to sell just part of the property. He doesn't want to just sell the front part. Now, if he only sell the front part, we could probably come in here and do a, some sort of grocery store. We'd love to get another development like we did Kohl's. Kohl's is a good sales tax generator. We did right beside it. We'd love to get a, another general merchandise store. Of course, Stein Mart shocked us when they went out across the street. And I, and I think Chair Holiday is right. You gotta be amenable and supportive of these retailers. I remember when we did the Walmart across the street. We, we did, added the Walmart and shops to the grocery store that White Store had across the highway. That was a long time ago. But when Walmart wanted to expand their store, not to bring up an old bad history, but when Walmart wanted to expand the store, the town of Farragut staff, that's not the current staff, but they were, had too many objections. So Walmart, I know because they told me, because we built the Walmart. And they said, well, you know, the town didn't, didn't really want us to stay. They objected to sidewalk sales and some of our expansion plans. So, so we're just going to go down to the North City Teleco. So they left the town. Boy, that'd be good if we had Walmart now, Michael. I mean, they do big, big sales per square foot. And it'd be good to have a Walmart there. But, but if we only were developing the front part, if we could only buy the front, we'd try to put just retail in the front and not medical office retail. But the restaurants will be good on the front. They'll provide some good revenue and this is probably, we're probably the only developer company around that would attempt to do this since we're here. We've been here for all these years. We've had a lot of retail stores for, for Farragut. The Engels, the, you know, the C V S, the Kohl's and Wal, even Walmart. But I don't think anybody else would. I think I think Commissioner Green's right. Most developers wouldn't try this because it's kind of risky. And it is risky. But the old Engels Center that we, when Engels wanted to build the new store and we were over in Asheville, North Carolina with Engels and we offered to build the new store at a real good rent and they didn't want to do that. They wanted, they said, no, they wanted to buy the property. So we sold them the property if they would buy the old center. And of course, they left the old center without much love, tender care till Mayor Williams pressured them and staff to do something about it. Now, thank God, Mayor Williams did because finally they've done something about that, the old center, and they're going to be getting some leases there, looks like. So that's really good. But that's been an eyesore, I know, for the town. But, you know, this is, Mr. Green's right. This is a tough situation. Of course, we're talking about medical office retail on the front and there will be some retail, medical and office. And then open space in the middle and then we've got to have multifamily. But then expensive condos around it. I think this could work and make the town proud. And again, you know, everyone always thought that the mixed-use town center would be on this property, the Ford property beside the town hall and the post office. That we did the post office, we sold the land after we developed that. We sold the land to the town hall when Mayor Leonard, 84, was my vice mayor. So we always thought this is where the town center, medical office retail ought to be is beside town hall, post office. That's what most of us thought. But you all are the decision makers. So, you know, you'll just have to decide which you want. And I want to say too, on the Biddle property, you know, I remember Mark read like 244 opposition to the Biddle rezoning. So there's always people that are out there that object. We understand that. And when you get it, when you run for office, like when the aldermen run for office, you know, they don't get all the votes. They get, for elected, 55, 60% of votes. There's 40% of the people vote against the alderman at Farragut. So there's always people that are for and against. You know, the country is pretty much split 50-50, which we've got big problems because of that. And things do move forward even when you've got some people that don't agree. But I always remember the 1964 presidential election when Lyndon Johnson swamped Barry Goldwater. But Barry Goldwater, he was too conservative, I guess. And Barry Goldwater got 38% of the vote, I believe it was. So even though that was the biggest landslide in presidential history, Barry Goldwater got 38%. So there was a lot of pro and con of Lyndon Johnson even back then. So anyway, you all are sitting in judgment on this and you'll just have to decide what you want to do.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else on the planning commission have any questions or comments right now?
Mayor Williams again. You know, I really, when I first looked at this and I envisioned it as being condos with some amenities, you know, because most of the time, whether you're building apartment complexes or condo complexes, they have a certain amount of amenities and this one really has none. But with very, very little open space. But I would have thought that, and I voiced this once before, that the, that your transition would be garden-style condos with more of the two-story type of condos in the middle and that were staggered and had some amenities. But that was just my own personal thought of what you would come up with. And, you know, as far as that road that's going across other people's property there, I don't know if you've talked with the property owners about taking that road down to Campbell Station, but I think, I don't know if you've got one or two property owners in the way there to do that. But that's a good thought if that could be made to work. But that's.
Well, that's something for the future. I mean, the town could plan for that and hopefully the owners of that land would like to hook back into this mixed-use development. They probably would enjoy being able to come up into this mixed-use development. But that'd be up to the town. We haven't worked with any of those landowners. But I, Mayor, I think the landowners that own that property, they would love to be able to tie into this, come back up into this mixed-use development. That's just my opinion. They would like to enhance the value of their property. But you're right, it'd be up to the adjacent landowners in town to work that out, the connection to South Campbell Station.
Okay, sir. Well, I've made my comments. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else got any questions or comments? Okay, that's, everyone had their opportunity here. We'll move on to item number nine.
My question, is this going to be for discussion again next meeting? Or are, no, you and Mr. Patterson going to press the vote up or down on this one at the next meeting, like you said, on the previous property?
I'm sorry, sorry. What did you say?
I think that's a question for Mark.
Go ahead, go ahead, Rita.
I was going to, that's a question for Mark if we're going to where we are with this.
No, I mean, it's, I mean, I don't think they're going to change what they're requesting. So we'll just present it for a vote and y'all can recommend it up or down to the board. Kind of what I'm hearing at least might be.
Yeah, we agree with that.
Okay.
I'm just wanting to verify that's what you want to do.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
So we're going to move on to discussion on request. Again, this is for discussion only. Discussion on request to amend the Farragut Municipal Code, Appendix A-Zoning, Chapter 4, Section 13, or 23, Site Plan Regulations, Paragraph C, 6R to address screening requirements for low-grade refuge collection and recycling stations. Benova LLC applicant.
Yeah, this item involves a text amendment request dealing with how the green garbage garbage disposal structures, non-residential context. And basically what the applicant is requesting is currently in the zoning ordinance, the requirement is dumpsters and recyclable containers are to be screened with permanent structure that is architecturally compatible with the principal structure. Then in architecture design standards, like you see on the page, there's also some language in there that talks about screening these and closing these and placing them in as discreet locations as possible. What the applicant is requesting is to allow as an option, if somebody chooses to use one of these low-grade refuse collection systems, that they would have an option to screen those with landscaping because the cost of the low-grade garbage disposal is $10,000 to $15,000 currently for a system like that. And if a developer has to also enclose it, spend money on an enclosure that it might steer them away from choosing this as an option and they'll just go with the traditional garbage dumpster with a screen like we've required on all the newer garbage dumpsters in the town. So it's really kind of a cost question. And we talked about this at the staff developer meeting in early March. And the, you know, the staff sees a lot of advantages to using this system as an alternative. I have a couple of citizen comments and I'll read into the record on this item too. But we would be hesitant to go with allowing landscaping to be used to screen these because our experience with landscaping is that if it dies, sometimes it's sporadically replaced and it's a kind of a tracking and monitoring issue. The benefit of screening these type of structures is that they are shorter than a traditional dumpster. So the enclosure wouldn't have to be as tall. Plus, the language that's in our current requirements, it really, all it says really is that the structure has to be architecturally compatible with the principal structure. I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be a masonry structure with brick, with a brick facade. I mean, it could be, but there is some flexibility in how the enclosure is constructed. And there's ways to, I think, have an architecturally compatible enclosure that would not be cost prohibitive. So I think the staff would recommend staying with the structural screening requirements with the understanding that these structures that they're proposing are shorter and there would be less to enclose. And then there is some flexibility in the current language on kind of materials that you can use for an enclosure to maybe offset the cost difference. Because again, I think from what I've seen with these, there's definitely some benefits. There's, the odor is contained much greater than the traditional system. There's not as much trash blowing around because these are covered. Dumpster diving is limited. The drainage runoff from these is less. So I think there's a lot of benefits to the community. And, but I don't believe we should allow just using landscaping as a screening option. So it's kind of an overview of, at least from the staff's perspective. I'm showing you some pictures of what some of these look like. Again.
What are the dimensions of these?
Huh?
The dimensions, how tall and wide are they?
They're a little over four feet tall, as I understand it. And I know the applicants here on the call, they can talk a little bit more about the dimensions. But if you do that. But these are obviously unscreened, which we wouldn't allow. But that's kind of what they look like. They're not bad-looking, but again, we would be consistent with our architectural design standards and our history with regards to dumpsters. Dumpsters, we would want them enclosed and screened and ideally placed in more discreet locations than these. But again, in and of themselves, to me, they're not really bad-looking. And this is kind of what one looks like when it's taken out of the ground. And you can see, you know, that a lot of the vertical dimension of it is underground. So therefore, what's exposed above the surface is shorter and easier to screen. There's not as much enclosure that would be required. And any traditional garbage truck can service these. You don't have to have a special truck service these. I do have a couple of citizen comments on this item. If you want me to read those, Chairman, into the record, they're pretty short.
Please.
Okay. The first one is from Stan Wilson. And Stan actually, let's see here. He is a resident of 433 Smith Road. He's also the manager of Facility Operations and Events with the Public Building Authority. He writes, "To whom it may concern, my name is Stan Wilson, manager of Facility Operations and Events at the Public Building Authority of Knoxville City, Knox County. We use the Benova Waste Containment Technology in downtown Knoxville. Following the lead of the city of Knoxville, the Benova containers are very attractive and in my opinion, can be placed anywhere without additional screening. They can resolve a great deal of the odor issues associated with conventional containers and blend nicely into the, as well as rural landscapes. If you're interested, you can view a recently placed container at Summer Place Garage right on the right, right on the road on Summer Place or multiple containers in Knoxville's old city area on South Central. I hope the town of Farragut will approve this new technology as it solves a lot of problems for citizens and business users alike." And the only other comment on this is from Gordon Holt at 10933 Farragut Hills Boulevard. "Good evening. I was interested to see the in-ground waste containers on the upcoming town meeting agenda. I attended a private school in West Knoxville that utilized this brand of container. The system worked well and was a much better solution than the previous rusty dumpster we had. It looks very good and blends well into the surroundings. You can see it at 8042 Gleason Drive, close to West Town Mall, regards." That's the only comments I had on this item. And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions. I think the applicants here as well, and they can give you a lot more information on this if you have any specific questions.
Go ahead and have the applicant, will you please give us your name and a business address, please?
Yeah, thank you. It's Greg Carmichael. I'm with Benova, based here in Knoxville, 2533 Hoyt Avenue. And back to your question, Commissioner, on the dimensions, as Mark pointed out, it is just a little over four feet tall, kind of on the dome, you might say. And the width is a standard dumpster width. So it's right at, I think it's about 82 inches outside. So just under seven feet wide, which is standard dumpster width. The depth is about six and a half feet from front to back. It's about the same footprint as a standard, traditional dumpster, just much shorter with the in-ground portion, of course.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Mr. St. Clair, I'm certainly supportive of the screening and placement comments that Martin made. I do have, maybe it's a technical question. I really, you know, the concept of the container versus the dumpster and the materials it's made out of, certainly over time, more serviceable. But you also have a, I'd say a sleeved hole or the receptacle for the container itself. What do you do over time to maintain that? Because it's going to collect, you know, water or debris and it could get nasty too because it's trapped below grade. At least that's my vision of it. Can you walk me through how you really maintain that over time? So it's, it doesn't create a nuisance?
Yeah, happy to do that.
Versus, you know, the pad that a standard dumpster would be on. You could clean it up with paper that's falling out of it or wash it down or whatever. How do you, you know, how do you deal with the bottom of the hole, for instance?
Yeah, so I do quite a few of these presentations and that's a pretty common question to architects. But the, so that picture that's on the screen right now, I can see that bit of a lip that's there above the concrete. It actually comes up about four and a half inches. So that's what keeps the water just from running into it. And by our standard drawings, we always request a bit of grade, you know, away from it. But the only time that that container is not in that hole is the 45 seconds that the truck has it out of the hole. So 99.9% of the time, it's sitting in that hole. And there's some, there's some guides on the. And there's some, there's some guides um, on the bottom of it. You probably can't really tell in the picture. Uh, that kind of guide it down onto the top rim of that sleeve. And so it, it seals at that point. And that's what keeps the water out of there. So we've got um. Between us and our partner company in, in Canada, we've got nearly two thousand of these in the ground. And um. We're not having any, any issues with, with water or debris getting into the hole. If, if you were to have a flood event. Um, in a low area. Then obviously um, that, that could happen. In that case, you know, we, we would tell the property owner to. Call the truck, arrange a, a one-time pickup and have them pull it out and then just, you know, drop in a cheap pump and, and pump it. But that, Sid, I don't know if you can see my camera very well, but that, this is actually a little three D model that, that we have. So that's a. Yeah, that, that sleeve is, it drops into the ground. Um, the maintenance of it. We, we had it uh, third-party tested, um, accelerated testing, and they came back at a, a forty-year life on the ground sleeve. That was the part we were worried about because if you're gonna. Get damage or, you know, have real maintenance to that, or if it cracks or something like that, obviously you don't want to go dig up your sidewalk and a lot of concrete. So that was our, kind of our main concern when we started out several years ago. But the uh, the general um. Product is, is about a fifteen-year lifecycle. And um, so kind of pointed out, it's a totally sustainable product because it's, we can make it from post-consumer content and it is a hundred percent recyclable. At the end of its lifecycle.
Is the sleeve anchored in, uh, I mean. Is it, or is there a possibility, have you ever seen an instance of uh, friends groundwater intrusion in the, in the thing, you know, to float up out of the, the ground?
Right, so you see this um, bit of a little rim here at the bottom? There's uh, there's holes uh, through, just through this outer rim that we put uh, like a number five rebar in, so it's, it's in a, like a spoke pattern around the bottom. And then we would pour up uh, concrete about usually twelve or fourteen inches. In this part of the country, we never need more than that. It's not going to float out. Um, but we have run into some high-water tables. You'll get them in Florida and whatnot along the coastlines. So we, in those cases, we'll bring the concrete up a bit higher just to keep it stable from floating out. But um. Yeah, that's a, that's how we, how we secure it and, and keep it in the ground. And of course, pour the pad up to the, that bottom edge there. Too.
So that top is really a ring joint that kind of fits in the bottom of the container, so it's.
Yeah, that's right.
It's not only raised on the outside, it mostly forms a ring joint with the container itself.
Yeah, I don't think you can probably see it. There's some, there's some tabs that kind of guided into, into place there, which. There's, there's probably some drawings of, I, I uploaded quite a bit of material for you guys to go through, but. Yeah, no, but it's, it's, we've had it out there eight years. So it's um, we kind of went through the hard, the hard roads back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen.
I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Green. I, uh, Mark Shipley. The item is discussion on a request to amend the Fairytale Municipal Code. Uh, exactly how much amending is, would be required. I think you said that presently it just says to be consistent with the architecture of the. Adjacent buildings or whatever it says. So do we really have much of a change? To the, to the code?
Well, the change is to allow landscaping to be used. As an option. If they choose this kind of system, as that would be your screening option. If you wanted to do that. So that would be a change to what we currently have. We don't allow that now.
Okay, and that's consistent with the discussion we had at the staff development meeting, so.
Yeah.
Uh. What's, what's your reaction to that, Greg?
Well, it's just that it, it makes it more economically feasible for a builder. Um, if they can use landscape screen in, in lieu of um. What I, I thought was required was a, a masonry enclosure. Um, there are other um. Things that I suppose could be regarded as architecturally compatible. There, there is some. Um, it's actually just a very recent thing we're working on, but there, there are some um. Fence-type panels that are. Um, molded to appear as uh, as masonry. Um, that are high-impact, like a low-density polyethylene high-impact panel. They have developed for dumpster enclosures. Um, that look really, look really nice, but I didn't have it uh, together in time to get anything in for this meeting. You know, it doesn't, it kind of runs us up to borderline whether a contractor would do that, you know, but it's um. I guess in, you know, worst case, for my, in my view, that would be. Um, it, it might be acceptable.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Green again. Mark, so the way that our municipal code is written now, does it prohibit the use of these containers?
Oh, no, no, it doesn't prohibit the use of them. It just requires them to be screened. Um, with the permanent structure that's architecturally compatible with the principal structure. But it's very, it's pretty broad, so. There's. There's more expensive ways to do that and there's cheaper ways to do that. So I think if the applicant. Found, because this is, as I mentioned earlier, this is a shorter. Structure to have to screen in the first place, so that should be a cost savings uh, in and of itself. And then the materials, there is some flexibility in the current language as to. How you, what kind of materials you use that. You would propose to the planning commission is architecturally compatible with the principal structure. That may not be that expensive. It doesn't necessarily have to be. A masonry enclosure. It doesn't say that in the language. A lot of people do that, which is fine. Um, but there's, there's lots of different options. To meet, I think the. Language of the ordinance as it is currently. But we do have reservations about just using landscaping, because we've tried that with some other things. In the past, like HVAC units and. It's uh, it's not super reliable and it's.
Yeah, no, I agree. Uh, what's, what's, what's the success path for the applicant here? Does he need to come up with several options that would work for him and see if they work for us as well? And then have that as a standard, pick, pick A, B, C, or D and go for it? I'm trying to find it on the path for the applicant to use his, use his product here.
If the applicant can meet the language that we have currently, if they think they can. Produce an economically viable screen that meets our language. Then they really wouldn't have to amend it. We wouldn't really have to. Go any further. Um, but if you all. You know, i- if the feeling is that we don't want to rely on landscaping solely. For this screening. Then I think if the applicant can meet the current language. With the understanding that there's variety in the kind of material you can use and. These are not as tall as others, other dumpsters.
Wouldn't they have to kind of sit down with you folks to kind of make sure that you're both on the same page, what they think is acceptable for the ordinance? What you think is acceptable for the ordinance?
Yeah, if, uh, yeah, if uh. If they have some examples of screening. That they've had to do in other, I'm sure as other communities that don't allow just using landscaping. I can't imagine it wouldn't be. And, you know, what have you used in those areas and, you know, we'll be happy to take a look at it because again, personally, I think this is a good option. Um, it looked to me, it's got a lot of benefits over what we have done in the past, but uh. But I don't want to just sit them out there on the ground without screening them with something that's reliable.
It's Mr. St. Clair, but screening is going to be site-specific to an application relative to the structure. So we're not, I mean, we're not going to go down a road to approve a screen.
That's right, no.
They're not going to screen.
No, I think what I was talking about, what I think John was maybe talking about was just. You know, the kind of composition of general materials that might. Qualify as opposed to just a masonry. Wall, you know, what.
And that's going to be site-specific on the application.
Yeah, absolutely.
This Commissioner Green, I understand that, but I think we ought to make sure that we're communicating with each other that, that what they think is okay is kind of consistent with what we think. And I say we, the town, maybe the town engineer or Mark or his staff. Rather than, than walking, believing that they have an acceptable path and walking up and finding out that that's totally unacceptable. I'm not saying we have to approve everyone, but again, they, they should, we should make sure, as I mentioned before, that they're on, that they're on the same page.
Well, what's acceptable is the container. Which is acceptable under the current ordinance. And if they want to get some, work with the staff on some screening examples, that's fine, but that. You know, that don't, that was an idea to change an ordinance based on that.
Uh, Mayor Williams, I agree uh, with the uh, sticking with the screening options that we have now. Uh, I've seen some that have the same screening that we have now and it has landscaping actually to hide that, okay? Uh, what we see in pictures here are just units sitting out on the open with no really way to, to screen them any at all. Uh, I think our screening. Screening now is, has been beaten to death as far as uh, you know. They can work and it, it will be shorter, uh, but uh, I don't see trying to plant. Uh, plants that could uh. You know, you, they may, you plant them and they're a certain height and. And, and let's say they're a two bore and, and then they grow to be a six bore and you're into the dumpster enclosure. I, I don't uh. I don't think that's really what we're after here. Uh. I don't, I don't think you really have a way to control your planting and uh, and then if it's sold. If the property's sold and the next guy's got it, you may not want to uh. I, I, I'm, I'm just, I think we're going down, trying to go down the wrong road here. I think our, our screening right now is fine. Uh, it's working and uh, I don't, I don't see that it needs to uh. To be a bare-knuckle type of thing where you, you've just got some bushes that, that kind of partially hides it and. Uh, over time it don't hide it at all and, and uh. You know, you can't guarantee maintenance on this kind of stuff because if it was town property, it'd be, we maintain, but. Not everybody else does. Not saying that these, whoever the customer, wouldn't, but uh, the chances are higher. I, I'm, I'm not in favor of really changing our screening or amended it at all. Thank you.
That's Commissioner Ross. One thing too, I know in addition to that, I think I, I, I tend to agree with the screening requirement, um, and no change to that. And I think Commissioner Green may have, was, was getting, alluding, is there any language in the municipal code? That prevents uh, somebody from digging a hole in the ground and parking a dumpster in it? Or is, is that pretty much wide open?
Well, there's nothing that, that I'm aware of that. In our municipal code that would not allow this kind of system to be used.
So they're, they're uh, by and of itself not seeking approval for the technology per se, but just um, variance up to the screening.
Yeah, what their logic was, was that it, it was a cost thing. If we're trying to.
Yeah.
Somebody's wanting to choose this system, which is going to be ten to fifteen thousand dollars. Then, and they're going to have to provide a. Masonry enclosure around it, then it's going to make it. A less desirable option as opposed to just going with a traditional metal dumpster and sitting it out on the top of the ground. Um, which would be cheaper. Uh, that you, because you got to enclose it anyway. The thing we're talking about, the staff level is that if you. When you enclose this, it's, it's going to be less enclosure because it's shorter. A lot of it's underground. And also, and also there's a lot of flexibility in the language that we have now as far as how you enclose it. Look at the architectural elements of the main building. And you pull from that. Different um, elements and use for your enclosure. Uh, it doesn't necessarily have to be. Masonry with a brick face. I mean, it could be, but it might be something that's less. Less costly that's still architecturally compatible.
This is Commissioner Myers. I, I have an observation about this. I, I, I think this is a, a real appealing alternative to the tall dumpster enclosures. That, that thought that, that I'd like to throw out to the planning commission. Um, and this is kind of from personal experience and, and maintaining dumpster enclosures over a long period of time. I, I, I do support having a permanent style enclosure. But where, where we and a lot of other businesses struggle in the town fairytale. Is maintaining their gates. And if you, if you look around at a lot of dumpster enclosures. Uh, either A, their gates are left open because the truck driver doesn't want to get back out of his truck to go close the gates. Or the gates have just been mangled to the point that they don't even close anymore. So one of my thoughts as an incentive to get somebody to do these smaller dumpster enclosures and mo- like the dumpster enclosures we use are. Every bit of eight feet tall. Um, and I think that's probably pretty standard for the traditional. Uh, steel dumpsters is maybe you have a permanent enclosure on three sides and you can eliminate the use of gates on the front side. Um, it as an incentive to use the smaller in-ground dumpsters that are the shorter dumpsters and therefore shorter enclosures.
Yeah, yeah, and if you look at the placement of it so that that front is not as. You know, noticeable, I think you, you know, I think you're on the right track now.
This is Commissioner Green. During the uh, staff development meeting, I think the applicant mentioned that the opening on this. That you can see in the photo that's in front of you. Let's take the one on the upper image with the blue part there. I think they mentioned that's spring-loaded. So the idea of having the gate open in the front, I think is appealing with this particular. Type of refuge container because it's, it is enclosed and stays enclosed except when the person comes and opens it up. To put something in because that automatically closes. Isn't that correct, uh, Mr. Applicant?
Yeah, well, it's not a spring, but it um, it doesn't open past ninety degrees, so it just gravity does. Yep.
So how about that concept, Noah, Commissioner Myers?
I, I just wanted to throw an alternative, something else that we've experienced as a unintended consequence. Of fully enclosed dumpster enclosures with the gates. Is that it, it creates a very discreet area for somebody to run in on the evenings or weekends and dump their old mattresses and. You know, big screen TVs from the nineteen seventies and all sorts of random things and. It is, it, to me, it seems like if you had a little, slightly a bit more exposure. Um, you, you might be able to inhibit some of that kind of illegal dumping. That we deal with and I'm sure a lot of other businesses also deal with.
Another attractive part of that concept, if you don't have to have a swing angle for that, for that gate, you can, you can have a smaller, you know, pad area.
Um, I've got a question for Noah. Um. Seeing the cylinder part that's underground. Do you have any idea how many of these you would need in the. In a business like you have at uh. Renaissance?
I would assume that, and I think our applicant Greg can um, answer this. But I assume they've already designed the volume with the same cubic yards is probably what we're using. I think the ones we use right now are either six or eight cubic yards and I have. One that gets emptied twice a week and I have one that, that's, you know, down close to a restaurant that gets emptied maybe three or four times a week. And so, but I think our applicant answered, but I, I bet their, the, their. Volume is probably pretty similar to what we're already dealing with around the town of Fairytale anyway. Greg, could you help out and elaborate on that?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Um, it's a six and a half yard by actual volume. But uh, what we find is with the, a lot with the eight-yard containers because the doors are near the front and they're down low. That a lot of people actually don't fill them up. They don't, there's a cavity at the back that's kind of left unfilled. Unless somebody climbs up the side and flips the lids back and throws garbage over the top. Um, which not everyone is willing to do or able to do. Um, so we tell architects typically that it's a comparison really to an eight-yard container, but. In techni- in technicality, it is a six and a half yard.
Know exactly what Greg's talking about. The dumpsters we use have, they basically have slide doors. On either side of the dumpster and then they have the big lid on top that's really only used when it gets emptied. Um, and to, to, to uh, really appreciate the full capacity of the dumpster, he's exactly right. You would have to close the slide doors and you would either have to get a ladder or climb up the side of the dumpster, flip open the big lid. And put stuff in there. So he's exactly right. Our, our, our dumpsters probably really only get used to maybe, uh, my best guess is. my best guess is sixty percent capacity before they, you know, before somebody says, hey, this needs to be emptied.
That was a question, too, they won't have to be emptied more often. That's costing the owner more money to pay for that.
Mayor Williams, I, I think you can have a more compact, you know, one thing that Noah was talking about was they, right now they make these dumpster, dumpster enclosures big enough because when they set that metal dumpster back down, they don't exactly hit the exact spot. It may be a little crooked. But you, these will be so close, your enclosures would be so close that you wouldn't really have room to stick mattresses and you can't get into the side to, you know, like a lot of people do, this would be a top load. And yes, it would be shorter. It would probably be more, the enclosure would be more compact. I think, I see, you know, this being a good product as far as initial appearance, not knowing any more about it than I do, but it looks to me like that you're going to have to have some, the angle that you do this, you're picking straight up. It looks like you must, you, it's hard to say whether you would clear the enclosure because I'm looking at this green truck with a white cab and I look at the angle that the, that the unit is now and it's just a little bit above the unit, the dumpster that's behind or, and it looks like it's already at an angle of coming out. So I don't know where exactly, I guess that it straightens up. You'd want it to straighten up before it got to the enclosure or, or you would either scrape it on, you know, you'd hit it on the back. The very bottom corner would hit the back of the enclosure. So I'd say that the enclosure would have to have a little bit more depth to it than what it would on the sides. So, and the one I looked at had like wood grain of some sort on the front of it. You know, the obvious blue, but it, it had the wood grain looking color on the front. So if it did not have a door on the front, I don't think it would be as intrusive because it's such a, a smaller, you know, enclosure altogether. My thoughts.
Does anybody else got any more questions or comments?
I'll throw out one more observation, but I think by using this type of system, you would also eliminate the need to install the bollards in the back of the dumpster enclosure, which is what we do now. And basically we do the bollards back there. So if the truck driver rams the steel dumpster into the back of the masonry wall, there's something to protect the masonry wall. So I think with this system, being that the, there's the cylinder that goes inside the sleeve, I, I think that you don't even need the bollards back there. Greg, is that, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that is fair. We do occasionally put them, bollards in, in front or, or behind when it's subject to parking. Just so people don't run into the container, but as far as the container, yeah, it's always going back to the same exact spot. Just incidentally, picture that truck that's on the screen right now. I, I posted a video of that on my LinkedIn profile today. Not anything to, meeting, we just happened to post it, but if you wanted to see that actually work, it happens, you could look it up and watch it.
Well, I think the guy, this is Mark, the guidance I'm hearing from majority of the planning commissioners is that have this ready for a vote and maybe just leave it as if somebody chooses this as an option that a gate would not be required. They still would have to screen it just as the current language is, is provided, but then, but, but no gate would be required. So that would be an incentive and a cost savings there from not having to put that out. And Noah's right, the gates are a chronic issue. I can't tell you how many property maintenance issues that we've had to get with property owners on dealing with the gates. Because some of them just get completely trashed and, and then really awful looking. So if that sounds like a good summary of what y'all mentioned, then I can add that as a text amendment if that makes sense.
Sounds good to me.
Should be screening on three sides, leave the front open.
Yep, good idea.
I think it's going to make it more advantageous to the,
Yeah, I think this system is probably going to be the system of the future to me because I just see a lot of advantages to this, a lot of perspectives.
Very nice concept.
All right, well, we'll have that on for a vote next time then.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Moving on to item number 10, discussion on request to amend the Fairgut Municipal Code, Appendix A, Zoning, Chapter Three, Section Four, Open Space Mixed Residential OSMR to require a concept plan in association with the rezoning request to establish the distribution of attached versus detached dwelling units, Town of Fairgut applicant. And just so you know, my mother was a math teacher and she didn't teach me the Roman numerals all that well evidently.
Okay. Well, this really agenda item came about from two recent rezoning requests we've had out in McPhee Road area to the OSMR. OSMR is an open space, one of the two open space residential options that we have. We have the OSR, which just allows detached, single family, and then we have the OSMR, which allows attached and detached. They both have the same density allowance. And the OSR district in particular has been very popular. Even though both of these districts have a minimum thirty-five percent open space, they have a lot of flexibility and there's no minimum lot size and setbacks are more flexible and frontages. So they've been, the OSR in particular has been very popular and I think OSMR could be more popular and is a good option, I think, consistent with some parts of our land use plan to encourage housing choice and, you know, a little less impact to the land because you can concentrate more of the dwelling units in a smaller physical space. So one of the concerns that's come up with regards to OSMR is if somebody's requesting rezoning, that there's really nothing in place right now that commits an applicant to a breakdown of what they're proposing, ultimately going to propose in terms of attached versus detached. And you could end up with a development that's all attached, units that may be in form incompatible with a lot of the surrounding plan and development. So the idea here is to require a concept and a basic concept plan as part of a rezoning request, OSMR. And really the purpose of it would be to establish distribution of attached versus detached and generally where those different products would be envisioned on the property. Kind of like what we ended up doing with Boyd Station Road property. They end up presenting a concept plan and it basically showed enough detail for them to know where they wanted to put the attached versus the detached and that it would physically work. So that's really what we're, we're talking about. So that when, before the property is rezoned, there's a general understanding of how much of it's going to be attached versus detached and where that might be development. So we have a concept plan requirement for a couple of our zoning districts, the planned commercial and the town center. We don't have any for a residential district like this. And I guess a couple of questions that I had in the packet for you all tonight, just for a workshop, is first of all, should we have a concept plan requirement for OSMR? Then secondly, if we do, then what basic level of detail should we expect on this concept plan? You know, there's, concept plans are required for OSR and OSMR developments, but they don't come into play until the property's already been rezoned and submitting a concept plan through the subdivision regulations. So, you know, I would, I've included in the packet the section of the subdivision regulations that has the concept plan requirements. And frankly, in looking over these, my perspective, a lot of them, you'd have to kind of know anyway to know what you really want to do with the property, no matter what your zoning is. So I think a lot of these would, would probably be an element of a concept plan. There may not be quite as much detail on certain things like a street scape and plan, stuff like that, but a lot of the basic readily available GIS, KGIS available information, that's actually fairly accurate as far as topography at least, can kind of tell you, give you a layout of where the street system could realistically go and where your different housing products would be appropriate, given, given the land and that it would be doable. And then what's the surrounding plan and development and how does it match up with that? So that's a couple of the questions. I don't know if you all have any, any input on that. If you want to see this become a requirement in the OSMR and, and then if so, should we take a look at the requirements for the subdivision concept plan, figure out what we'd want to see in association with the rezoning.
Mayor Williams, I think, I do think we need a workshop on it because this is a good idea. I think the reason they're going to ask for OSMR to begin with is because of some sort of challenge on the property where similar to what Russ and them asked for because they had the power station and the lines to contend with, or they may have sinkholes or most anything else. I mean, they, they pretty well know what they're going to do as far as placement or they wouldn't be asking for OSMR probably to begin with. So I think it would be, I don't think we need to have the most detailed information like we do with the commercial stuff, but I think we do need to kind of get a, a, a broad stroke of, of where we need to be at as far as the location and, and the reasoning and all. So that's, that's my thought.
Mark is, is,
And I agree with that. I think the more, more information we have on the front, the better off we are. Also, if we approve a zoning and it has several sections to it, they can come back and do something totally different than what we were anticipating. So I think that's a, a good idea.
Mark, this is Ed.
Next, Ed.
I would agree that we, we need something. What I'd like to make sure is that we're trying to do, shoot for something, I'll say is the minimum requirements and calling it a preliminary or initial concept plans will have you to where they don't have to, you know, spend as much money as they would and then come back with a final concept plan. But it's something we can feel hold our feet to and, oh, relative to the initial submittal. It's not something that's fluid.
Like a preliminary concept plan.
But what are, what are the key elements that are the minimum that we would need in this quote, initial plan or preliminary plan or whatever you want to call it?
Yeah.
But I think we need to distinguish between two type concept plans too. So I don't know what terminology you want to use, but.
Well, let's just look, so if you look at the requirements we have for subdivisions, which I don't think we need that level of concept plan. I agree with you. This is a scaled down. I mean, we need the basic stuff you would have on most any plan, the title block, address, acreage, name of the developer and applicant and that kind of stuff. North area and scale and, you know, that, that stuff. Boundary survey, I mean, they're going to have to do that anyway. Present zoning classification, that's easy. Significant physical features, I think those, if they're based on readily available information like known depressions on a, you can, you can get from KGIS or gentle tree covered areas that might be useful. Know whether attached versus detached might be more appropriate for certain parts of the property or whether it has enough physical constraints to warrant that kind of zoning. But then I think probably the, the more detailed information about the tree characteristics and the, I don't know about the contours. I wasn't really sure about that. The street grades and stuff like that. I think that would probably come later with the more detailed concept plan. That's just my thought. That you kind of want to make sure that it's doable generally on your preliminary concept, but really what you're doing is you're presenting the physical character of the property, what it surrounds and then where, what kind of distribution based on that do you anticipate with the attached versus detached and where might that be situated on the property? How do y'all feel about that?
Mark, this is Commissioner Myers. I, I, I agree with everything you've said. Maybe with the exception of having a boundary survey. And the reason being is if, if you're, you're, let's say, looking at a piece of property. Yeah, oh, well, yeah. I mean, you could, you, all of a sudden you could, you know, generally speaking, you're two thousand dollars an acre for a boundary survey. So looking at thirty acres, it's, I mean, it, it could be a really darn expensive survey. Now normally with a boundary survey, you're going to get other things like the tree information. You're also going to get your topo with that. So, but, but my thought would be using KGIS information. Now, it is possible KGIS information is wrong. And if once they do a boundary survey after this, you know, maybe there's some sort of a caveat that says, hey, if there was a major discrepancy and really what we're trying to do is, is what's spelled out on this agenda item, which is establish the distribution of attached versus detached dwelling units. And so, but I, I think we could catch that in a conceptual plan without requiring a boundary survey.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. I agree with that actually. Yeah. Because that is a big expense, especially if you had a property like the one on Boyd Station. It's a lot.
Yeah.
This is Commissioner Green. Commissioner Myers, is there a normal progression of the level of detail when they go through the developing process, developing a plan?
Would I call it, was there?
Like a phase one, a phase two, a phase three, a phase four? And we could say what we need is a, is the phase two or the phase one?
No, there, there is not any, any particular guidelines that a particular civil engineer or developer follows. But I, I think what Mark spelled out, I think generally speaking, we, we have a pretty good idea of, of what the planning commission would like in a concept plan. And really a concept plan is a ten thousand foot view plan to be able to look at all the, the, the eas, easily discernible items and issues. Again, there's a lot of times where the concept plan works and then by the time you've, let's say, measured the hydrology, well, the concept plan doesn't work anymore because you need a big detention pond in a particular location. So, but again, there is not, there's not an easy way to say a phase one or a phase two. I wish there was, but every civil engineer would interpret it differently.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions and comments on this?
I think I could put something together about the general components of a concept plan for this kind of rezoning and probably have it ready for y'all to make a vote on if that sounds reasonable. It's, it sounds like y'all agree that it's a good idea. So.
Definitely.
Okay.
Item number 11, approval of utilities.
I do not have any utilities other than that was, that started the meeting.
And citizens forum, you've already read all the comments.
I don't have any others that were not on the agenda. So.
Okay, okay. In that case, the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Farragut Municipal Planning Commission is adjourned and everybody stay safe. Especially Noah.
Thank you and go balls.
Go balls.
That's right. Thanks. Good night, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Wow, there's, there's everybody up close.